Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm starting invocation with Dr. Stephen Hall from the Department of Veterans Affairs.
Tessie. Excuse me. Let us pray. O sovereign ruler of the universe, who art the Lord a host and God a peace, we without thee our efforts are in vain. Continue thy blessing upon us and our families, we pray thee, and guide our Nye County Commissioners during their deliberations for the betterment of our citizens as a whole. Lord, also enable them to better the community in which we live through your devotion to duty as citizens of this great nation. Lord, may they good providence shield us from all harm and watch over those who even now guard the gates of freedom and bring them home safely to their families. As we ask that, you bless the United States of America. In the Lord's name we pray. Amen.
Commissioner Cox, would you lead us into the pledge?
The pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is founded, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today is June 22nd, 2020. This is a joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, the Nye County Board of Highway Commissions, the Nye County Licensing Labor Board, the Nye County Board of Health, as the governing body of the unincorporated town of Perump, and then the governing body of the unincorporated towns of Beatty, Gabs, Manhattan, and as the Board of Trustees for the Perump Pool. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the one we all love is general public comment. Up to three minutes time limit per person, actions will not be taken on this matter considered during this period of time specifically included as an item on the agenda as an action. Anybody for public comment?
Richard Goldstein, G-O-L-D-S-T-E-I-N. Frank, can you come down here a minute?
Am I going to jail?
No. We should be so lucky. I'm here representing the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 15, and as everybody knows, a few weeks ago, we did our Forget Me Not campaign. And I'd like to present Frank with this certificate of appreciation, an appreciation for your wonderful gift of time and support in our recent Forget Me Not fundraiser. Thank you.
Again, thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Joe Burdzininski, B-U-R-D-Z-I-N-S-K-I. Good morning, commissioners. It's another lovely day, even though we had some rain.
That's a good thing.
I'd like to talk about four points this morning. One is I'd like the commissioners to consider changing some of the rules as it relates to campaigning. The table situation at the voting area was kind of crazy with people having to get there at three o'clock in the morning. Causes tension, causes tension amongst the county staff, sheriff's department. We can do better. Also, the signage. Hearing complaints about signs over culverts and signs on the side of the road and signs here, signs there. Let's take another look at that and see if we can correct some of those issues because those rules were developed by a previous commission that's no longer sitting at this table, and I see that we need to change some of that because it could be used in the future for selective enforcement, which would be wrong. The other thing is that I wanted to talk about is the word corruption. I heard a lot of that in this primary campaign, and frankly, I'm very proud of living here in Perump, Nye County, or a good county. Yes, there may be some bad apples, but I do not believe this county is corrupt whatsoever. Next thing I'd like you to consider is a moratorium on building any solar farms. With the water levels going down in Lake Mead, the drought we're under, we need water to live. We don't need water to wash solar panels. And then the final thing I'd like to say is that during the election, I had some concerns, and I want to compliment the clerk, Sam Marino. She was very responsive to all my requests, spent time with me and others that had concerns. So I'm not sure if Sam's up in Tonopah or not, but I want to take this opportunity to thank her for her service here to the county and how she took care of us during the primary. Thank you very much, Sam. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sam, anybody on the phone?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good morning. This is Timbal, N-N-D-O-H-I-C-N-O-N. I would like to thank all those who were able to be in attendance Monday evening over tonight's community coalition, for the Nevada Standard Breeds Association meeting and discussing about this project, you know, Perump. For all the tenants, and thank you. If anyone has further questions, they can reach out to us via email, d@novatastandabreds.com, or on Twitter at E underscore Nevada, or local phone is 775-990-9308. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. Go through it, Sam.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dr. Stephen Hall, H-A-L-L. I'm a chaplain and a volunteer chaplain for the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the Department of Veterans Affairs. I would like to thank the commissioners for their generosity and their help to the veterans of this great county. As if, a lot of people don't know that the commissioners did donate a van to the department, excuse me, donated a van to the DA for transporting veterans to their hospital with the VA, which helps greatly the veterans of this county. I'd like to personally thank you very much.
Thank you. That's really, really nice to hear. Sam, anybody on the phone?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good morning, commissioners. Erica Gerling, G-E-R-L-I-N-G. Wanted to let you know I'm here in Beatty if you have anything for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Ma'am?
Good morning. My name is Mary Likness. It's L-E-I-K-N-E-S-S, and I just have a statement that I would like to read. I've lived in this town of Perump for four years. When I purchased a home in Artesia in 2018, the weather in summer months were perfect for one year. I would watch the nighthawks fly over my home and dip into my pool for a drink of water. The sky was filled with dozens of them, and as the sun would set, they would fly away and return the night, the next night. Now I see two. Last year, I didn't see any. We have all heard there is a lack of available water, and without water, there are no bugs, and without bugs, there are no birds. What makes the people of Perump believe that they are sitting on the largest aquifer in the world? The people sitting in front of us, they own businesses, build homes, depending on their true and political beliefs, whatever is necessary. You represent us. We have been told over and over again that we sit on one of the largest aquifers and that we have nothing to worry about. It's not true. Perump does not even come close to the largest aquifer, even in the state of Nevada. We do not have the largest aquifer. I read a study written by the Washington State Groundwater Association that did a study on or about 2020 in the town of, for the town of Perump, water consumption, which states, number one, red hot growth is draining Perump's underground aquifer and threatening its dwindling water supply with human waste. The ground is sinking as they pump out groundwater faster than nature can return it. Number two, in order to survive, Nye County asked the state for the right to draw water from the Nevada Cold War atomic test site, which is 30 miles away, and detonated over 260 nuclear bombs near or below the water table. Who is going to pay for this adventure? Which may or may not lead to radioactive material being transported into the Perump water system? These are all quotes out of the report. The immediate threat, Perump has no public sewer system. Thousands of individual septic tanks are flushing nitrogen-rich toilet water into the ground. It's just a matter of time before the groundwater is polluted, said the Environmental Protection Division. And according to a January 2017 study by the Nye County Water District, as our water continues to decline.
Ma'am?
The wells will fail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Stremel, S-T-R-E-M-M-E-L. Yes, in the Perump Valley Times, the week before last, an article about the big repaving project on the 160, it indicated there was an ancillary project to replace a cattle grade 27 miles away out where it comes into the 16, the US 95. Could they not have also thought of another ancillary project much more adjacent to that, namely putting a right turn lane from the southbound 160 onto the 372, where there's routinely backups and emergency vehicles are getting stuck? It's just awfully frustrating to read about, you know, 305 million reworking of the Tropicana Interchange over in Las Vegas and other huge projects over there and end up as not yet, maybe never getting back to my request on the, whether we're getting the motor fuel excise taxes returned to us for what we need here in Nye County. But it's just, it seems to me that should, it's a matter of human life and health, not just convenience, and with the Bank of America recently closed, it's a matter of just busting the curb down, maybe having to move a signal light at the intersection, but it's just awfully frustrating that you've got something very proximate there and cannot be combined with this main project.
Thank you, sir. Sam, anybody on the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Diane? Come on down.
Diane Southworth, S-O-U-T-H-W-O-R-T-H. I'd just like to start out by saying thank you, Commissioner Strickland, for showing up at our Nye Community Coalition meeting. It was very instructive. You had a lot of good instincts, and I appreciated the fact that you showed up, and I think we all did. We did spend an awful lot of time on housing and homelessness, and I think that's very important as our housing costs are going up and our low-income housing is not available, and we do have a certain amount of homeless in the, in the community. Just to let you know, another thing that is going on is that WIC got extra funding for food, for fruit and vegetables through the summer to help people that are on WIC. They get extra money for their moms and for their kids. Also, Nye CC Coalition got a grant to get extra fruit and vegetables, and they've been able to distribute that throughout the county, especially up north as well. And although we didn't talk a lot about it, I think it was a good thing to have. We also got new community resource brochures, which are much smaller and easier to take care of. I would have, I would hope that anyone here who would like to donate some time and some expertise, go to Nye Community Coalition, see what interests you, get involved, and let this community be a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on the phone, Sam?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Ma'am? Bring that down and make sure there's a green light. Okay.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
My name is Donna Jokinen. It's J-O-K-I-N-E-N. My maiden name is Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I wanted to thank the board for all their help and stuff that they've had working with us and stuff, as much as you have, trying to get things straightened out for us. But I'm having problems and stuff with the sheriff's department, the DA's office and stuff, because my house was stolen a couple of years ago on a fraudulent foreclosure, and I still haven't gotten any resolve on that, even though the fraud was proven. It keeps going back and forth that they said I sold it through my living trust, and my living trust, I did not, because I'm the trustee and truster. I did not sell the property, didn't receive any money. I was thrown out of my home, and I understand this is happening to quite a few other people as well. And I need to have some resolve done because I'm not getting anywhere with the DA's office or with the sheriff's department as far as my home was paid in full. I built it and stuff. I had designed the house myself, and my husband and my son, my brother and I, and my son, had helped build it and stuff, and we had paid cash and stuff for building it, and we, we spent about, I spent about $350,000 and stuff on supplies and repairs and things for the house. We built it from scratch, and I need to know if the commissioners can do something about helping me get my house back and my money and my four vehicles that were stolen, and I'm not getting anywhere. I can't get the police or sheriff's departments reports. I've asked them several times. There's about 35 reports and stuff of things with these people and stuff that have committed fraud and forgery and embezzlement, and I'm just getting nowhere. I need your help. I don't know what else to ask you, but if you could help me, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam, anybody on the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Sir?
Lab, L-A-B-O-S-S-I-E-R-E. That guy does a great job over there. Too much information is better than not enough, but once you get out of Perump, everybody that does everything in the other communities are volunteers, and a lot of them work, and it's very hard when something's passed out and it's got a very short deadline for us to, you know, if we miss the email that day, then we, we just don't know if something's happening fast enough to come all the way down here. And, you know, we're the next town over in Amagosa. I can't imagine how it is in Round Mountain or Gabs, you know, when they, they need time to, to show up, to get heard, and that's the secret to our government is people need to feel like they're, they're participants and that, that they get a chance to hear. May, maybe he needs somebody to help him out for more specific things to the individual communities so that we don't get a sea of emails that there's a phone call saying, hey, this is important for your community, does somebody in your community know this is happening? We just missed the deadline for the Amagosa Valley Solar thing, because I, I didn't check my email that day, and, you know, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot for volunteers to try and keep track of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Say your name, spell for the record.
Good afternoon. My name's Michael David Garcia, G-A-R-C-I-A. Man, my heart goes out to you. What you're a victim of is, is called probate rape. It happens in family courts. The ones that profit here off of this are the judges and the attorneys. That's happening every county, every state. I'm on the platform. I'm actually a victim of family court violence as well. It's called Cash for Kids. It's been 925 days since the Nye County schools, which Mr. Sutton's aware of, violated my First Amendment right. I've been arrested at a school board meeting for taking advantage of this. I've been branded a domestic terrorist for upholding God's trust in our faith and family, protecting our children, the ones that have a voice, that are voiceless, are most vulnerable, are elders and our children. They're being victimized. In the state of Michigan, you cannot lose guardianship or conservatorship without a trial now. That's the whole premise behind Family Court, is, is there's no due process and there's no equal justice. It's a violation of human rights. If you have no choice, freedom dies. I've been arrested. Sheriff Worley, the last three days, I've been calling to see why they've denied me services. I've got a criminal report here basically outlining what you say, the fraud that's happening in our DA's office that's being funded through y'all's sponsorship. I believe we're coming up on Independence Day, and the Bill of Rights, I think we need to understand our limited amount of government. The strongest foothold in this arena is M4L, Mothers for Liberty, DeSantis out of Florida. We spend the same amount of money on education, but yet we're last. We've got a school board member right here. We're last in safety and wellness. That is child abuse and neglect all by itself. I have video footage, getting back to my criminal complaint about deprivation of the First Amendment right and the Fourteenth Amendment right that is ordained by the Creator. I am here on the divine providence of faith and family. What I speak of is if I can become a victim without due process and without equal opportunity, equal protection, everybody else is vulnerable. I can pull myself out of hell. It's no problem. There's minions in here over policing our constitutional rights with no accountability, and it's heinous. It's wrong. Okay? It's child abuse, and I have video footage, 925 days, zero response. Look me up on Governor Sisalax's website, his own government website, and see what I call out. Aaron Ford, he's never protected anything in his life. He's from Texas and doesn't have a Texas creed. That's not a Texan. Defend the borders, okay? God's trust. It's faith and family. You're violating human rights. You're violating the Constitution. You're violating my protection, and nobody's paying accountable. God bless. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, it's exposing.
Sam on the phone? Sam on the phone?
No chair.
Thank you, Sam.
Pat Minshall, M I N S H A double L, Amagosa Valley. Want to give a shout out to the, uh, road department. The next portion of Farm Road is almost be complete, has almost been completed and it's really nice. I think they only have to do the strip, striping. On the other hand, I didn't see the dura patcher out there, uh, which we had requested for the very bad condition of the rest of the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good morning, Commissioner Sherry Stringer, S T R I N G E R. I'm the treasurer of the Prump Valley Adult Softball League and we pay for the fields at Petrac Park. We are having issue with the homeless. Um, they are going out on the field. They're refusing to get off of the field. Um, we've had many of them defecate in the men's bathroom, smearing it all over the walls. I feel so far sorry for Jimmy's crew, um, where we can't even use those bathrooms that are on Field B. Now that it's summertime, everybody's bringing their children. They can't be left alone. We've had several times where we've had to call the sheriff out. We have a gentleman that goes around taking pictures of the young girls while they're playing and, you know, if their parents are out in the field and don't see it, we've seen it several times. We've reported it. Nothing has been done because they say it's a public park, but yet we pay for those parks. When, when it's our turn to be on those fields, we pay for those fields. And so we're asking you as an administration that maybe there's something that you can do. Um, the park at night, um, the playground, you know, the kids want to go over there. They can't go over there because it's pitch black. So I don't know if there's any lights that can be installed, um, to help out. Um, you know, I would never send my children over there because that's where all the homeless are at because it's dark. They're leaving trash all over the, the ground and we're responsible to make sure that those fields are clean when we leave. Um, now we're having the pool open. We're having a lot of issue with the kids coming out and they're just dumping their trash all over the place and we're responsible for picking it up at the end of the evening. Um, maybe there's something when the pool closes that they can go out and police that area in front of the pool, cause I don't feel that it's fair that we have to pick up everybody's trash at the end of the night to make sure that our fields are clean by the time that we leave. So if there's anything that you guys can do, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I know the sheriff's department probably heard all that, so. Chelsea? Yep, just push that, light should turn green. There you go.
I'm still, I'm still kind of new at this. Um, Chelsea Fisher for the record. Um, first of all, I want to thank all of our county commissioners, um, especially the few of you who actually come to our school board meetings and community events and are trying to mend our community together. Some of you I haven't seen out in the community and I hope to see more of you if you plan on staying on our board. One thing that I was told to come here and address and to address in front of all of our commissioners is the fact that we live in a desert. Obviously we have water issues that other people have been addressing. Um, my load is kind of full, so I'm not really on top of completely what's going on with that and hearing what this other woman had to say about, um, going deeper and getting wat, water from the test site, that's pretty concerning. I, I definitely wouldn't recommend that. I don't drink tap water. But one thing that would be great, I think in our community would be a new, a new community center, obviously, that apparently the V E A had promised us, which never happened for some reason. A new pool put in would be great and possibly a splash pad maybe at one of the parks for kids, but having it on a tank that circulates the water so that way it's not wasteful and it circulates and cleanses it. I think that having a splash pad at the parks in the summer, since we live in the desert, would be great and it would also help bring children and families together because it would kind of provide something for kids to do that's not so hot. Another thing that I wanted to actually come here specifically and address I saw is kind of an agenda item on number twenty-four about transportation.
Can't do that, Chelsea.
Can't, can't talk that one. It's, it's on the agenda, so this is public comment. So when that item comes up, you can talk to that.
Okay, well, I'll just bring up my story then. So, um, I wanted to bring this up about my neighbor. Um, she's an elderly woman that lives by herself and we have a lot of elderly people out here, retired people who are single. Um, my phone's always on silent and I always joke with people and I say what happens at night is between them and God. Um, however, I'm pretty concerned because she had tried to call me all night and neighbors and had to take an ambulance, which probably wasn't necessary, but when she was discharged at four o'clock in the morning, she sat in a wheelchair until around seven or eight o'clock in the morning because the hospital said there was no one to pick her up and take her home. That's pretty crappy care for anybody. So I just wanted to bring that up. I'm also curious on what's happening with our Section Eight housing. I've been hearing from people across our community, obviously, um, you know, people with families and children, that we don't have any Section Eight housing here and they're being sent to Las Vegas or told to go to different cities. So I would like to know more about that and have that addressed if possible.
Chelsea, your time's up. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Family Watchdog is a great website for sex offenders in the community, just if, if nobody knows. Thank you.
I'm going to get used to that one. You're on the school board. Okay, anybody on the phone?
No chair.
Okay, I'm going to close general public comment. Move on to item number three. This is Commissioner Manager's comments. This is limited to announcements on topics and issues proposed on future workshops and agendas. Commissioner Jabore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, everybody. Good morning. A lot of great, great information, great concerns, and, uh, we will look into those. I want to also extend a happy belated Father's Day to everybody out there in the audience and here on the stage. Hope you had a great Father's Day on Sunday. I certainly did and, uh, thank you again for being here today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Strickland?
Hey, good morning, everyone. Um, as you know, we, uh, we look forward to these comment periods so we can learn what's more going on in the community and then dive into it. And what happens next is that staff, uh, manager specifically gives us a weekly update and tells us what actions happened from your comments. And so I didn't know if you knew that, so what you say does get looked into and we appreciate all that. More specifically, there was an item that was brought up about Section Eight housing and Section Eight housing is something that, an individual that owns a home, so a homeowner would allow a renter to provide, uh, take Section Eight. So we have no control over that. We don't provide any housing to the community, uh, just so you know. And, um, I do want to give a shout out to the administrative staff here. We had our Nye County Water District Governing Board meeting yesterday and every single board member, every time they had an opportunity, when they got their opportunity like now we do, wanted to shout out and say how much help they have received from all of you in order to make that water board work, uh, specifically here in admin with Samantha Tackett. And, uh, Dan Weeks is sitting as our manager and, um, we really appreciate the help because we are launched and on our way. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bondo?
Thank you and, uh, good morning. It's good to see a relatively full house here for the agenda. I want to congratulate all the, uh, primary winners and, uh, I gave my opponent a phone call and congratulated him as well. I would like to ask the county manager, please make sure that we get him looped in. I'd like to see him running, not just, uh, you know, trying to get on the board, uh, in January. So, uh, let's extend those pleasantries to those folks. This way, uh, they're, they're up to speed. The, the people deserve that much and, uh, to know what's going on. I know we did, I don't know if like Naco and all those other things, well, those are customary. We're real, kind of like doing, um, what's, what do you call it? The before and the after. Everybody's, uh, attending Naco and things like that. This way, uh, if those organizations are having those events and stuff, I know we're still coming out of the COVID situation, so, uh, with that, I'll have some other items, uh, at the closing, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner, there's a Naco meeting at nine-thirty teleconference on Friday. Uh, anybody that's interested, that's Nevada Association of Counties, so that's where we, as counties, get together and hear what everybody else is doing and it's very helpful. Thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you. Commissioner Cox?
Yeah, I'd just like to say congratulations to everybody that won the elections. It's nice to have them over with. Um, and to the people that lost, you know, I feel bad for you because I know what it's like to run and it's not easy. Anybody that's dedicated enough to even run, I'd like to say thank you to and never give up. There's always the next time. But I appreciate everybody that did run and, um, looking forward to working with the people that did win. And I'd like to address Section Eight just for a minute. Section Eight is very difficult. For one thing, you have to be on a list for two years. The landlord has to accept you if you have Section Eight. So that's difficult because there's not a lot of places that will rent to you under Section Eight and you can't force a landlord to accept it. But there's other landlords that are happy with it because, uh, they have guaranteed rent. So it's a good thing in some, some instance and it's, and it's good because we have some low-income people that if they're put out into Section Eight and distributed throughout the county, um, people don't know they're on Section Eight, so they don't get treated poorly like as if they're on welfare. They get accepted in the community because nobody knows that they're any different than you and I. And so it's a good program in that way. But, um, we do have people out here that are on it and they, we just don't have enough apartments or housing that accept it. So if anybody knows people that need it, you might give Section Eight a phone call and, and support the program so that they can be on it. And that's pretty much all I have at this point.
Thanks, Commissioner. Um, yes, there, there was a lot of things brought up today that, uh, some stuff for some reason or other, uh, is, and, and again, I'd like to sit down with the young lady that talked about the water issues and I think the Water Governing Board Chair who's sitting just right behind you or just across from you would like to talk to you as well because we, we definitely have some different information that you need to hear, uh, because some of us have been here for a long enough time to know what's credible and what's not credible. Again, like, I'd like to echo everybody else's comments in regards to the, the election. Um, I think that, uh, running is a, a tough job. Some of us, I, I ran for Justice of the Peace and didn't win. Sometimes you don't win, so you have to pick it up and go do something different. So I hope that everybody who was at least, didn't make it this time will find something else that we can do because we definitely need people who are willing to, willing to get involved in our community and do some service. So we thank those people who have done that. So again, um, I don't have anything else. Anybody else? I'm going to go ahead and close this item.
Chair?
Yes.
One other, one other item. They made the comments, you brought it up with the water and the nice lady was bringing it up with the water. I don't believe there's ever been an attempt to pipe water from the test site. You're correct that it's radiated. The test site bombed two hundred, they tested two hundred bombs out there, but that water's never been proposed to be piped out here, not to my knowledge or recollection. So I think you got some of the facts mixed up or wherever you got those facts, they got their facts mixed up because that, that's never been a thing. We, we don't want that water. We don't want that water.
No, no, but.
I don't need a third eye, please.
No, no, but you're.
I've seen the episode of The Simpsons with the eye. I've seen the fish.
You're correct.
We don't want that. I'm just, but, but I, I don't think, I don't believe that's an accurate, uh, statement there.
Thank you again. That's great. And, you know, that brings up another item that I know I've made mention more than one time as a commissioner, that we probably need to actually, because that water at one time was designated to be used not only for us, but for other people. And I'll, and like I said, I'll go over that, that situation with an individual because there's a, there's actually definitely reports that went through that. I still think the county needs to sue the federal government for screwing up that, taking that water away from us. So let's put that back on the, on the list to talk about. I mean, it's time for us to step up because it is hurting us. So I'm going to move on to another item. Any directors, anybody from the DA's office, planning office, anybody going once, going twice? Okay. Close that item. Items, item approval agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Commissioners. Today we'd ask that you remove the following items from your agenda. On page number one, item five. And then if you jump down to page four, please remove items twenty-six through thirty-one and also item thirty-six. So on page number one, item five, and on page number four, items twenty-six through thirty-one and thirty-six.
I've had a couple of requests, Chair, uh, Commissioners, um, so I think that, uh, item number thirty-two, can we jump to that one pretty quick?
Item thirty-two for possible action, discussion and deliberation to declare Lisa Chanley's Justice of the Peace position vacant and determine whether to, one, fill the unexpired term approximately two years by appointment, or two, pass a resolution to hold a special election to fill the position for the unexpired term.
When would the special election be held? That's my question right out the gate.
Well, it takes, it takes a considerable amount of effort to get a special election on, on the ballot, so, again, it wouldn't be, I don't know if we could even make it to the November.
Clerk Merlino?
I'm sorry, what was that, Chair?
Yes, I, I had not looked into this, but as with everything, it takes at least two to three months to get a special election going, but I'm, I'm happy to look into that.
Thank you, Sam. But again, I, I don't know if we're going to be able to make November on it, but it would be nice to have that question answered. Uh, anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, well, I believe if we were to go with a special election, it would be costly and we don't have the time to do that. Uh, the caseload according to, uh, the current judges that are serving is a little bit overwhelming. They're traveling, they're doing the best that they can and this, this position is necessary and I believe that we need to set a timeframe as quickly as possible, uh, to, and, and to advertise for, um, applicants of interest and, and interview them and get this position in place as soon as possible.
Is that a motion you're making?
That'll be my motion. Yes, sir.
Oh, so your, your motion is to declare the Justice of the Peace position is vacant. Is that what you're telling me?
Do you want to rephrase it?
I just want to make sure it's clear because there's people over there that are going to give me a hard time if it's not.
Chair, I'll make a motion to declare that the position is vacant, accepting that resignation letter and, uh, to move towards, uh, filling by appointment because that's what it seems the board would like to do.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to hear from the justices since they're here in the room if we could.
Before that, I want to hit, I want to hit the public comment taken care of and then we'll go to the justices.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to open public comment for this item. Anybody here? Anybody on the phone? Wow.
No chair.
Thank you. Tonapa? Nobody? Okay. I'm going to close public comment. Where are the justices that want to talk?
Come on down.
Somebody do want to talk?
You don't have to.
This is like The Price is Right. We got to call their name and say they're the next lucky contestant. Come on down.
Glad to see you, sir.
Good morning. Glad to be here. Believe me, feeling blessed to be here. Judge Sullivan's been doing an outstanding job. My name's Kent Jasperson, J A S P E R S O N. It's been a while since I've been up here, so I almost forgot that, but without Judge Sullivan, I think we'd be in a real bind. I wasn't, I'm still not a hundred percent, but I'm coming back and doing what I can do to make things work and I'm thankful that he's available and that he can help us out. My recommendation to the board would be that it be filled as expeditiously as possible by whatever means. By appointment, I would probably be the earliest and most expeditiously. Um, do you have anything that you want to say, Gus?
Gus Sullivan, S U L, L L, L I V A N, Justice of the Peace of the Beatty Township, and I had a great conversation with Mr. Sutton yesterday. I talked to him about it, my concerns. Uh, I am trying to make myself available, but it's really coming to be task at my Beatty Court. Uh, I'm, and it's, and I'm shorthanded up there. I've talked to you, all you, several times about it. Uh, I'm just not a.
Has anyone reached out to Judge Clapper to have her come down and assist? I know we always lean so much on the good Gus Sullivan and you're so humble. You come down and you make every effort. Have we reached out to Judge Clapper in this time of need?
I have not. Like I said, I was not involved in this until I was made aware of the fact that Judge Chamely was going to resign her position and I wasn't ready to come back. In fact, June 8th, I just had my last chemotherapy treatment. So I'm still doing testing. I'm still going to my doctors. I'm still being evaluated. But I felt my obligation to the community and the citizens to not shut the doors of the courthouse because nobody was there and if it wasn't for Judge Sullivan. But no, I have not reached out to Judge Clapper with regards to that. I'm not sure logistically how that would work exactly, depending on the size of the calendar, depending on whether it would be an extra expense if she would have to come down the day before or spend the night and go home the next day. Then we'd have to pay for lodging and everything else for all of that to happen. So I haven't reached out to her at all and I don't believe that Judge Sullivan has either.
If I recall, at the time, because we had an active judge, Lisa Chamely was actually the active judge.
Right.
Wasn't required because we went ahead through the process to get Gus Sullivan to stand up based on your letter.
Right.
Well, I mean, we've done everything we could at that point in time.
Right.
Judges, thank you. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be well, young man. Be well. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Again, we've had public comment. Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Jabora's aye.
Jaboni's aye. Okay, with that, I'm going to also take item number 40 so I can get people to go start buying fireworks.
Item 40 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to issue a display fireworks event permit to Zembelli Fireworks for an aerial display for their annual Fourth of July event on Monday, July 4th, 2022. This event is being held at Petrick Park, 150 Nevada 160 in Perump, Nevada. Applicant, John O'Brien.
Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Anybody on the phone?
No Chair.
Anybody in Tonopah? Close public comment. Call for the question.
Aye.
Jabora's aye.
Jaboni's aye. Thank you.
Just a real quick comment. 50th anniversary Freedom Festival this year. It will be special. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like it.
We like special. All right, let's go back to the items that we have. Let's go to item number six, presentation for the employees.
Item six, 10 o'clock timed item, presentation of certificates and/or plaques to nine employees honored for their years of service.
Employee service award? Employee service award for five years of service, Eric Hall. Another five years of service tonight County, William Triplet.
Thank you. Man in a chef's coat. I can understand that.
All right. For 10 years of service tonight County, Samuel Charles. Dropped her glasses. Here's one. 10 years of service, Connie Foss. Come on down. Oh, here's the, you start getting these double digits. 15 years of service tonight County, William Gray. Congratulations. Thank you. 15 years of service tonight County, Luis Movi.
Thank you very much.
That's it. That's it. So you did more exercise.
You get hung up on a name, you butcher it, and that's a problem.
Okay, item number seven. It's a timed item.
Item seven, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action, discussion and deliberation regarding the monthly statement of County Treasurer pursuant to NRS 354.280, including receipts, balances and funds, money on deposit, outstanding checks and cash on hand.
Hello, you got Mark here?
Thank you, Mark.
Are you hiding on us?
I'm doing my best.
All right, great. Or is that your camouflage and we can't see you?
I'm trying my best. Anyhow, Tracy is going to lead you through the slides. What I'm going to go through is the, again, I'm going to call them interim bank reconciliations for January, February and March. What I'm going to do is focus on those things that you should expect to see every month and those things that are unusual that may require further follow-up on the treasurer's part and then we can go from there. You'll see that at the bottom of each slide after Tracy pulls it up, I can't see what you're looking at, but I'd like her to display the January reconciliation, please.
She is.
Okay, and let me know when it's on the screen so everyone can see it. January, please.
It is January, according to what I have in front of me and she has a treasure pump.
Okay. So what I want to do is focus on each individual account and the types of things you're going to see on a regular monthly basis. We do get receipts into the deposit account, but sometimes those receipts apply to a previous month if they're received at the beginning of the month. And sometimes they apply to a future month if they're received towards the end of the month. So as you can see from the deposit account, we had items that were deposited in the books in December, therefore affecting the beginning balance, and were actually deposits that were in the books in January. So deposits that were in a previous month in the bank. We do have January deposits that were actually part of December's business, so that would be a reduction in the bank deposits because our book deposits would have already been recorded in December. And then we have items in January that are recorded in January but not deposited in February. If you look at unapplied deposits, we receive money on account for accounts receivable items. And sometimes it takes a lag between the time that we get the cash and either identify the advice received from the various departments. And those sometimes take time. In this case, the deposit in the bank was greater than the amount that were applied. Now, you'll notice that there's no beginning balance there because I believe some of our difference to reconcile from the beginning is a result of deposits that may have been received but not exceeded, but not in the books as of yet. And then every month, you're going to see cash receipts credit that are offset against deposits. When we make deposits in the bank, if there are credits to be made, those are netted into the deposit amount, but those are recorded as gross in our books. So that is to gross up those cash receipts to the full amount and showing the credit into the withdrawal column as they appear in the general ledger. Going on to the tax receiver account. We have an issue with checks that have been paid but never recorded in Eden and I would like in my remaining tenure to be able to get together with Samantha and establish a procedure so that we can record those through journal entry. Those are checks that are recorded in a separate subsystem that is not part of the Eden system. In any given month, when we deposit and apportion our tax receipts, we then transfer those, that cash for the apportionment from the tax receiver account to the deposit account where all money is used for county purposes. So every month, we need to make a transfer of the apportioned amounts. In other words, those amounts that have been identified and recorded as received and then we need to allocate that money to the deposit account. Those transfers for the October and November apportionments were never re-recorded until the January time period. So this was a catch-up for items that should have been transferred in October and should have been transferred in November but were not. And so this was the actual transfer. In addition, December apportionments for taxes received were not recorded in December as they should have been. So those were posted into the books in January and they should have been in December. And then I had identified additional receipts that were in excess of apportionment. So amounts that should have been apportioned in prior months but had not yet been apportioned. And you're going to see on future bank reconciliations where we have differences between the cash received in the tax receiver account that have not been appropriately apportioned and allocated to the funds. This is a concern I have and when Aaron gets back, who's our contact from DevNet from his honeymoon, we're going to be sitting down and talking about these differences because as you're going to see in future months, these accumulate. But in the month of January, we apportioned more than the actual deposits received. So in other words, if you look up at the top under the tax receiver account deposits of $3,892,194.20, the actual apportionment was $3,387,826.28. So we actually got more money in than we apportioned in the prior month. So we need to allocate that. So you're going to be seeing those types of entries for other issues that have occurred in the tax receiver account in the future. In the payroll account, we have beginning outstanding checks and ending outstanding checks which account for the difference between checks that are cleared versus are deposited or cleared through the bank. You'll see there's a black box around the control account. And I believe that this is the primary difference in our difference to reconcile because of the way we record transactions in the control accounts for payroll. I still need to get a better understanding of that so that we can include that in our normal reconciliation. While these have no impact on cash, they do affect the amount of deposits and withdrawals that are recorded in the system. Any questions so far? Should I keep moving along?
I got a question for you, Treasurer.
Sure.
You said that, so we having problems with DevNet? Is DevNet causing us a problem in regards to where we are with our taxes? I mean, is there an issue there?
Again, I still, it looks to me like we are apportioning amounts that are different than the actual balances that are received. And we should be apportioning all the balances that are received. So again, I need to meet with Aaron from DevNet to see why we have such difference. You're going to see in coming months that that difference is even greater than the deposits in the account because the deposits in the account in any given month should be fully apportioned in that month. And I'm seeing that they are not being fully apportioned and I need to understand that why.
Okay, thank you.
So if we look at the vendor account, a regular monthly item that you will see there is the outstanding checks at the beginning of the month and the end of the month, vendor checks outstanding. In addition, when we make payments, we net any credit against the payments. And when you see the check going out in the bank, it just shows us a withdrawal. However, our payments are recorded gross and then the net against that payment or a debit or credit that's due to the vendor is recorded in the deposit column in our Normally, when we, this is something that you're going to see coming up on several occasions of items that I've identified. When we need to make a wire transfer out of Eden, we need to cut a check first so that the transaction can get recorded in the system. There's really no convenient way to record the effects of a wire transfer into the Eden system. So what it requires is that we cut a check, deposit that check into the bank account so it's a recorded and then deposited, and then we make the associated wire transfer. What we have here is a transfer that was made in January but not recorded in the books until February. So what we have is withdrawals from the bank of $814,000 where we made the transfer but not write the check and make the deposit until February. We have a similar item that I identified from the December beginning balance as I was researching similar items like this that occurred where we did not simultaneously cut the check, make the deposit and then make the wire transfer, which is the proper method of accounting. I identified in December, which is part of our, was part of the largest, large beginning balance differences that I had started out with, was a payment to Tonopah Solar refund for overpayment of taxes that was made to a law firm on their behalf. Fraser Ryan, it looks like a law firm anyhow. And it was recorded in Eden as, was not recorded in Eden. It was just a wire transfer that was made. And so that payment of $1,161,914 was never recorded in the accounting system. And this was a recently identified item as I began to look at similar items to the $814,000 that were made as a wire transfer but not recorded in the books. So these are items that are not in our books that need to be recorded. And I will be working with Savannah on the reasoning behind that when I get back from my holiday. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you to make sure that we did have that conversation.
Yes.
There's something just missed there. There's got to be a reason for it.
Yes. I think there was some issues as to the propriety of that payment and we just need to get to a resolution on that. is the primary difference in our difference to reconcile because of the way we record transactions in the control accounts for payroll. I still need to get a better understanding of that so that we can include that in our normal reconciliation. While these have no impact on cash, they do affect the amount of deposits and withdrawals that are recorded in the system. Any questions so far? Should I keep moving along?
I've got a question for you, Treasurer.
Sure.
You said that, so we having problems with DevNet? Is DevNet causing us a problem in regards to where we are with our taxes? I mean, is there an issue there?
Again, it looks to me like we are apportioning amounts that are different than the actual balances that are received. And we should be apportioning all the balances that are received. So again, I need to meet with Aaron from DevNet to see why we have such difference. You're going to see in coming months that that difference is even greater than the deposits in the account because the deposits in the account in any given month should be fully apportioned in that month. And I'm seeing that they are not being fully apportioned, and I need to understand that why.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So if we look at the vendor account, a regular monthly item that you will see there is the outstanding checks at the beginning of the month and the end of the month, vendor checks outstanding. In addition, when we make payments, we net any credit against the payments, and when you see the check going out in the bank, it just shows us a withdrawal. However, our payments are recorded gross, and then the net against that payment or a debit or credit that's due to the vendor is recorded in the deposit column in our books. Normally, when we, this is something that you're going to see coming up on several occasions of items that I've identified. When we need to make a wire transfer out of Eden, we need to cut a check first so that the transaction can get recorded in the system. There's really no convenient way to record the effects of a wire transfer into the Eden system. So what it requires is that we cut a check, deposit that check into the bank account, so it's a recorded and then deposited, and then we make the associated wire transfer. What we have here is a transfer that was made in January but not recorded in the books until February. So what we have is withdrawals from the bank of $814,000 where we made the transfer but not write the check and make the deposit until February. We have a similar item that I identified from the December beginning balance as I was researching similar items like this that occurred where we did not simultaneously cut the check, make the deposit, and then make the wire transfer, which is the proper method of accounting. I identified in December, which was part of the largest beginning balance differences that I had started out with, was a payment for Tonopah Solar refund for overpayment of taxes that was made to a law firm on their behalf. Fraser Ryan, it looks like a law firm anyhow. And it was recorded in Eden as, was not recorded in Eden, it was just a wire transfer that was made. And so that payment of $1,161,914 was never recorded in the accounting system. And this was a recently identified item as I began to look at similar items to the $814,000 that were made as a wire transfer but not recorded in the books. So these are items that are not in our books that need to be recorded. And I will be working with Savannah on the reasoning behind that when I get back from my holiday. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I was just going to ask you to make sure that we did have that conversation.
Yes.
There's something just missed there, there's got to be a reason for it.
Yes. I think there was some issues as to the propriety of that payment, and we just need to get to a resolution on that. Okay, in building and safety, there are deposit differences between books and the bank that you should see on a regular basis. You'll see the Fifth Judicial District Court, we had cash deposited in the account that did not get recorded until March. So then the following items you'll see on a regular basis are separate items that occurred as a result of errors that may have been made in the posting of the transfers. And so you're going to see regular, unrecorded bank account transfers. In other words, the sweep account, moving money from deposit account to cover payroll, those sort of things are regular monthly transactions that are easily identifiable. In addition, we have some transfers between fund accounts that occur for the $637,000 that occur on a regular monthly basis that affect the books but not the bank in any way. In addition, as I described before, you need to issue a check and a deposit to record a wire transfer, and the $1,984,000 are for the transfers of that nature that occurred that inflate the transfers in the books, but in the bank but do not occur in the books. If you look at the market value interest, there is a one-month lag between the time that we record our interest and our market value adjustments in the books. And in this case, we had prior month bank market value changes that were recorded in the current month, and interest that was recorded in the current month but actually was received in the prior month. Then we also have items that were received in the current month for $1,492, so that's the loss that occurred, that will not be recorded until actually the next month, which is February. And the same thing with market value interest that we received that is not recorded until the next month.
That doesn't seem...
In addition, I...
That doesn't seem like an unusual situation.
Not at all. It is a regular routine item. So all those items where it says regular one-month lag, you should expect to see every month when these are being recorded on a timely basis. However, in researching the investment account bank activity, I identified December market value errors and January market value errors that were not properly recorded in Eden. And so these reflect the adjustments that were put through, it happened to be in May since I messed the April cutoff for closing. But these items will be recorded in May, once we get those, have been recorded in May in the books. So what we had is an additional loss in January and an additional loss in December, $132,000 and $151,000 that were not recorded in the books properly and are now being reflected in the books properly in the May timeframe. So moving on to February, if you could please. Is February up?
That's correct.
Okay. So you can see in February, deposit account, we have similar items as we had in the past where we had February deposits that were actually recorded in January and March deposits recorded in February. And then in this case, we applied more deposits than we had received. So in other words, they were getting caught up on deposits that were made in prior months. I believe that that $157,000 may relate to months prior to January but have not yet been able to identify that because of the incredible manual effort involved in doing that research on an individual transaction by transaction basis. And in addition, we have cash receipts credits that are offset against deposits. In a similar fashion, the deposits in the books are gross and the deposits in the bank are net of any credits that might be applied. Again, further on, in the tax receiver account, we have checks that were paid but never recorded in Eden. We also have the December apportionments that were recorded in January and January apportionments that were recorded in February. And if you look at those adjustments, those are the transfers from the deposit account, from the tax receiver account to the deposit account so that those funds can be used by the county for payment of bills. Again, carrying over, we had December that was unapportioned, unapportioned receipts prior to that, and then we had January apportionment that was in excess of deposits. And if you look at the February apportionment and the deposit number above under the tax receiver account in the bank, the bank had $754,408.43 of deposits, whereas we apportioned in that month, $1,948,912. That leaves a net overapportionment now of $412,699 if you look at the over and under apportionments. So I suspect that relates to prior periods that are being caught up. But again, this is something that I want to make sure that we fully understand is why our deposits don't exactly equal our apportionments in any given month. And we will be working with Aaron from DevNet on that issue. Again, I've put a box around the payroll account because I believe the majority of my deposit versus withdrawal unreconciled differences, as you can see, the debits are pretty close to the credits, and I believe those have to do with the payroll deductions that are netted against payments and using the control accounts for applying those where they appear gross in the books and netted in the payment amounts. If you look at the vendor account, we had, again, our beginning month of checks outstanding and ending month checks outstanding, which reconciles our payments to the actual amount that cleared through the bank. And then we also have the usual credit that are offset against checks. However, we had a transfer that was recorded in the bank and in Eden but not cleared until March. So in other words, we recorded the amount of the wire transfer, and we also recorded the checks. So in other words, a negative withdrawal, but those were not in the bank properly. And so we didn't do the deposit until the next month. So the check that was written wasn't deposited and cleared until the next month, but it was recorded in the books in the current month. And then the wire transfer occurred in the bank, but again, the deposit wasn't made to offset that. So this is the effect of the clearing accounts on that erroneous process where we should be doing all of this in one month. So we essentially had a deposit in transit, a check in transit, and then a wire transfer that had not occurred until the proper month. Should have happened all in February, but it didn't happen until March. Again, we had the wire transfer that occurred in January that finally the deposit was booked in the books in March and the check cleared for that amount. And again, the December Fraser Ryan, Tonopah Solar carries forward until resolved. We have some building and safety deposits that need to be reconciled between February and March that I need to get resolved on that, but it's not a material item that affects this item. And again, the Fifth Judicial District Court still had not been posted, so it shows as an outstanding item. If you look at the market value interest, one-month lag, you can see in that month, the 1.4 million, 1.5 million loss was recorded in February and the interest was recorded in February, so that's reflected in the books but not in the bank. And then we also have additional February loss that was not recorded in March and was recorded in May Eden, and the interest was not recorded in the month but was recorded in May Eden. So that was the loss that needed to be recorded. Any questions about that?
Basically, some of the same questions as in January, but...
Yes. Yeah, same sort of stuff keeps happening in how things are being handled appropriately. But we're going to work through that.
Okay.
And we can get into the reason why for that, but I don't think it's going to be any value to this discussion right now as to why these things occurred, but I think...
I think that's something we have to discuss on a different venue. So let's get to March because we've got to move along.
Okay, so March, again, we had apportionments that were, February apportionments that were transferred in March of 2.7 million. I just want to go through the highlighted items. We had deposits that occurred in excess of the receipt. So in other words, we had more deposits than what was applied. So you can see we had $6,353,000 worth of deposits, and we did not apply that much in our tax adjustment to record the items in the fund balances. And so again, we are carrying over some amounts relative to accounts receivable. So we applied more. It was less than the actual deposit of accounts receivable items. So in other words, there's items in accounts receivable that need to be resolved. In addition, if you look at tax receiver, we had a March deposit that exceeded the apportionment. So we have portioned almost $2 million less than the $6.3 million deposit. If you look down at the other items under the vendor account, what you see is the adjustment for the transfer paid in February that was not in Eden until March. And then also, we identified an area where we had overpaid the Nye County School Board. There was a change in accounting methodology between us and the state where the state receives the funds and then gives those to the school board. And what we did is we sent the money to both the state and the school board, and that represents a $900,000 overpayment that was received in March but has yet to be recorded in the books. And this was identified late on Thursday, Friday, so still need to work on getting the accounting straight for that. In addition, we deposited in the books the $115,000 Judicial District Court. You'll see also at the bottom, the March loss that is recorded in the bank that will not be recorded into May of 3.5 million and the $181,000 of market interest in the bank but not recorded in the books. So just, if you can pull up the last slide and we'll go through this real quickly. This shows your ending fund balances for this year. I've already presented the full treasurer's report.
I think he means the first page. Excuse me, Treasurer. We're getting to the first page is what you meant. Standby.
Yeah, fund balance change.
We're ready.
Okay. So as you can see, these are the ending balances in the funds and the debits and credits for those individual months. In the last meeting, I showed the January, February, and March reports. And the next month, I will show the April and May reports and the bank reconciliations for those. Because now that I've kind of figured out where the major boo-boos occur and the major differences occur, this should be a lot easier. There are still some smaller differences that need to be researched, but I think it's a matter of priorities in the treasurer's office right now. If you can see, we had some dramatic drops in fund balances between March, April, and May. A lot of that had to do with underapportionment and taxes that were received in May. We had an additional $5.6 billion in tax receipts in May versus April, and we had about a $3.5 million minerals mining tax payment received in May, which gave us a large increase. Had that not occurred, you would have seen the full impact of the around $7.5 million of additional loss that has occurred through April that would have been recorded in May. So I'll be prepared to give you a better analysis of all that when you see those wrapping up and being recorded in the May bank reconciliation.
We thank you for that. It's a lot of reporting just to catch us back up. Still have several months that we've got to catch up at, so Treasurer, we appreciate the input.
All right. Any further questions?
Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Korf.
All right. Should I stay on the line for anything else?
I think we're good unless somebody else has a question.
Okay.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Y'all can understand it all. Hang on, Mr. Korf, we have somebody who wants to make a comment.
Marian Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. Major boo-boos. That's more than a major issue for me. I don't know who this treasurer is, I don't know how long he's been in office, and I don't know who he keeps referring to in some program. I don't know any of that. So I'm looking at this for what I see on the screen. My question is this. This isn't probably, I'm assuming, an issue that's just happened this year. So I'm going to assume that there have been audits done annually. How did those audits ever get approved or weren't they approved? And my other question is, has there ever been a forensic audit done? I don't believe so. Because in a forensic audit, all these issues would have been raised, and there would have been a source or a direction on how to address it. So I believe at this time, a forensic audit needs to be done rather than spinning your wheels with looking at this and looking at that. A forensic audit will show you where your deficiencies are, and if it's a deficiency in the staff or the experience or the way things are done, that'll show you. And I think it would be a learning experience and a positive effort to get to why this happens. Major boo-boo is not a little boo-boo, and there shouldn't be any boo-boos. So I would recommend to the treasurer, whoever would be in charge of that, excuse me, to suggest a forensic audit because I've been involved in those before, and I'm going to tell you, it's the best thing that can be done at this point if this is, I'm sure, not a new event. It looks like it's just been unfolding over the years. So it'd be my recommendation, and I hope it doesn't fall on empty ears. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? All right. Close public comment. We're going to move on.
Are you not going to give any background to why we're here in case they don't understand? Because it was very evident that that particular comment did not. We have requested a forensic audit. Our treasurer actually quit us. I wonder why? So we are holding the bag and trying to figure out the why, but thank you for your comment. Thank you, Chair.
So everybody understands the person who's there has actually only been there for five weeks, basically?
Since April 11th.
11th. And he's actually almost performing a forensic audit himself, but that's the first step. So let's move on to number eight.
Item number eight, 10 o'clock timed item, presentation from Best in the Desert Racing Association regarding the Method Race Wheels Casey Folks Vegas-Torino on August 12, 2022.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here. We'll do a short presentation. I'm Darryl Folks, F-O-L-K-S. I'm the CEO and co-owner of Best in Desert Racing Association, and I'm also the oldest son of Casey Folks.
Good morning, and thank you, guys. I'm Jerry Parsons, P-A-R-S-O-N-S. I'm the race operations manager exterior. Thank you.
Regarding Vegas-Torino, the race has grown through the years, and today it receives national and world notoriety. It's ranked in the top five in USA Today as one of the most important motorsports events in the United States. This year's Vegas Torino is approximately 500 miles. Jerry has corrected me that it's actually 495 miles this year, starting at the Beatty Airport and finishing in Dayton, Nevada, just outside of Carson City. This year's event marks the 26th annual, and its expected amount of entry adds... This year's event marks the 26th annual and is expected amount of entry, as in vehicle entries, is 375 to 400. Along with those vehicle entries comes 5,000 people as far as pit support, media, and the racers themselves. From start to finish, the race goes through five counties. That would be Nye, Esmeralda, Lyon, Mineral, and Lyon. I'm sorry. Churchill. And it covers two BLM districts, uh, Carson City and the Battle Mountain District. There are nine paved road crossings, and we are at the final stage of the end doc permit process. We should have those permits in our hands, uh, I think sometime next week, if not this week. Estimated revenue expenditures, 10 to 15 million dollars, with 80% of that spent in the five mentioned counties throughout central Nevada. Without getting too lengthy here, in closing, we, uh, like we have asked for the last 25 years, we're asking for the blessing of Nye County, and we're more than happy to field any questions that you might have. We also have the map of the course up here on the screens.
Is there any public comment for this item? I know it's a presentation, but it's a, it runs through everybody's yard. Commissioners, have any questions?
Um, sitting as the liaison to the Public Lands, uh, Advisory Board for Prump, we have nothing but good to think about this, so you should know. Thank you.
Ms. Jabor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. District One Commissioner, I'm involved with, um, many of the workshops that you attend, uh, with the respective townships that, uh, your, your race will be going through. And, uh, the people are very, very happy, uh, with your group. Um, and it comes up time and time again in regards to the road, the roads that will be traveled, the roads that will be raced on, and the condition that, um, that they need to be brought back to. So just to bring that back to your attention, that's their biggest concern, our biggest concern, uh, but we're absolutely happy, delighted that, uh, you, you continue to come through our county.
Thank you. Um, I'll, I appreciate you bringing that up. I will tell you this, uh, the motor graders will be starting immediately after the race. That's kind of a Best in Desert policy we have. We want to get those, uh, those roads back to restoration the way, uh, they looked in the way that they were, uh, before the race ever started. So that's taken very serious, and that's a huge expense for us, but that's what we've got to do to keep things right.
That was gonna be one of my comments, is making sure we are, everything's back to the way it should be.
Yes.
As it was before you got there.
No comment. I, I think the presentation speaks for itself. These guys are, they know what they're doing.
Sounds good, thank you.
No, I'm happy with everything. Thank you.
You gonna be on the road with them? Just checking.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nye County.
I think we're very happy. It's always nice to have you guys. Thank you. All right. Well, I asked for public comment.
You did.
Uh, number nine?
Item number nine, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Continued public hearing discussion and deliberation on WV dash 22 dash 10, a waiver of Nye County Code 17.06.040 F2 to allow marijuana to be grown outdoors for MJ Distributing's cultivation and production facility located at 2215 East Anvil Road, Amargosa Valley, Nevada. Assessor's parcel number 019-181-02, Paris Baloras slash MJ Distributing C202 LLC slash MJ Distributing P133 LLC applicant.
Assistant Director?
Good mor- good morning, commissioners. Uh, so, uh, Steve Osborne, O-S-B-R-N-E. MJ Distributing is asking for, um, a waiver to allow 23 acres out of their 100 acre parcel to be outdoor cultivation. There's two options for the applicant to do that, to make that request. Uh, one would, would have been to include the outdoor request with their special use permit, uh, which they didn't. Uh, they were asking for indoor only at the time when they got their special use permit. Uh, so the other option is to apply for the waiver, which is what they've done. So to waive that indoor requirement. And this is for 23 acres out of the 100 acre parcel. Uh, we did receive one letter of opposition, uh, to the waiver, which I believe you have in your backup, uh, the last page. Uh, that was the only, uh, comments that we received on the waiver application. So be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Hi, commissioners, anybody have questions?
No, just.
Commissioner Jabor, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, thank you, Steve, for, for the info. Has the, uh, this is in Amargosa, and, uh, we've been through this, uh, before, going before the board, et cetera. Has the cannabis board been out? Has the cannabis board been, been contacted to, to give an opinion on the 23 acres for outdoor grow?
I know that they've been out to the property, but as far as the outdoor portion of it, I don't know that they have been contacted on that. But they will have to approve of the outdoor cultivation.
It has to come through us first before they get that.
Okay. Thank you.
So in regards to the smell, I just want to ask, uh, the assistant director, hemp is, uh, hemp and marijuana, cannabis, they're very similar, are they not?
Yes.
They smell about the same when they're out there?
They do.
Yeah. It's kind of frustrating, I think. What would be the only difference between the two plants?
The only difference? Uh, really, the only difference is that cannabis has THC in it.
The smells are the same.
The smell is the same.
And it's a federally protected agricultural plant now. Hemp is, correct?
Hemp's considered an agricultural crop, right?
Right. So you can grow that wherever you'd like? And I can't stop the smell?
Uh, that is, in Amargosa, you could, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cox?
Yeah, in Amargosa, we could stop the smell, or were you referring to something else? I mean, I, I didn't quite understand your reply to that.
In, uh, in, within the Prump Regional Planning District, I believe, uh, hemp requires, uh, hemp requires, um, you have to get, well, you can, you can grow hemp outside in, uh, it's just considered an agricultural product.
Exactly.
As far as the zoning goes, but, yeah, in Amargosa, there isn't any zoning, so you could grow hemp anywhere out, outdoors.
Assistant Director, just want to help elaborate, within the Prump Regional Planning District, cannabis, marijuana, all the establishments were designated to grow indoors.
Correct.
That was the challenge, was that we had hemp, and hemp could be outdoors, which has the same smell as we've already established. So you would get, we would receive complaints, the smell, et cetera, and those companies were getting blamed, but I, we couldn't prevent those. We had the spot zoning and things of that nature. So we cannot do anything to prevent the hemp, which is virtually identical to the cannabis.
In this case, we're not talking hemp.
Well, you do understand one thing, that if we do this for Amargosa or anybody, we're gonna have to do it for everybody that comes here. So I want you to know you're opening the door by approving.
We already have one outdoor grow approved in Amargosa.
Exactly.
Yeah, but it's not.
And that's prob- that's probably the biggest problem we have.
Yeah.
Is because the Department of Agriculture has not been asked first.
Yeah, and they, and it does smell really bad. Hemp smells really bad. I, the one that was over on Harris Farm Road, there were a lot of complaints about. Yeah, and the whole area smelled bad. In fact, it kept my brother from buying a house over there. So I, I'm kind of torn on this.
Well.
If you didn't understand my question. And my point was, um, the more that we do, the more it's going to be advertised, the more people we're going to have wanting to expand to outside facilities. So I'm, I know this is, it. I know how bad.
Ms. Cox, let me elaborate just a little bit on this.
I know how bad it smells over, um, even though it's grown inside, because apparently they're not keeping their filters clean. So there's no way to get away from the smell. So I'm, I'm just kind of, okay, now you can go ahead.
No, I, I just want to elaborate because you're making statements saying, you know, we're gonna open the floodgates. Well, there's no more licenses, so I, I don't see any more floodgates. It's been standard practice, at least from this board, that anything within the Prump Regional Planning District has to be indoors, period, end of conversation. Nobody's really tried to ask for that. Anything outside of the Prump Regional Planning District, so that would be primarily Amargosa, because that's the only other area of interest, it's been just open grow. We haven't had any issues. The, what I'm seeing here is, is that you have two competing businesses that are competing, and they're kind of trying to get us in the middle. I don't want to get in the middle of the kids. Let them, let them just do what they do. The businesses will figure it out the best they can, whether they just decide to do hoop houses, whatever their solution's going to be. Um, they're all female plants, so there's no, no, you won't see this cross-pollinization. You won't see the issues we had from hemp. The only reason I bring up hemp is because they're identical, except for THC content. So when, with regards in respect to the smell complaints, you just can't control it because the smell is there. The smell is there from hemp. It's not the marijuana per se.
I know that we grow inside, except for the fact that if we're not careful, we'll have a lot of people wanting to expand that have already got permits in the Prump area to grow outside eventually.
Outside here in Prump Regional Planning District or outside in Amargosa?
In the Regional Planning District. I'm concerned about this bleeding over into Prump and making more of a problem than what we already have.
We, we're not entertaining any outside grows.
In Prump, right.
Prump itself, the PRPD.
Right.
The only thing that would be out there would be illegal. And if it's illegal, I expect.
No, we're not.
Sheriff's Department working on it diligently.
We're not doing it now, but I just want you to be prepared for the future. Cause we never know what the future's going to bring.
I think our point, what we're trying to make the point is, is that if there's illegal grows, Sheriff's Department is in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I know I got the best ones here, so they know, they know what they're looking at.
I just wanted to make you aware of when we do it for one person, we're gonna have to do it for the next under most cases. I mean, sometimes there are limits or things that we could put in there, but I just hate to see everybody that now has grows deciding they're going to grow outside and saying, "Amargosa gets to do it, why can't we do it?" And I know we have a map, um, and hopefully that will succeed the problem, but.
There's no more licenses, so you only.
I know, I know, I know, but they can. You're saying, but the people still can. The ones that, I mean, you have licenses. So anyway, um.
Thank you.
We'll, I guess we'll do that.
We'll see what happens.
We'll see when it comes.
So, thank you, thank you for that. Uh, the guys are here from the, from the people that are growing, so let's get them first before, John? 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 Hang on a second. You want him to go first? Okay.
This is work. Good morning, Paris Baloras, B-A-L-A-O-U-R-A-S. Um, just wanted to bring up a couple of things as far as some of the comments that I've heard. As far as, you know, the outdoor grow, it's the most efficient way to do this. If you wanted to expand it and make it profitable with another license inside of Prump, you'd have to have the land available. And most of those licenses already contain on an APN. So I know, you know, that makes sense, what you're saying, but at the same time, I think, I think there's other issues that would jump into that, and, and the lack of licenses as well. So I really kind of feel like, if every of the people that do know me on this board and some of the people here in the audience, I've done this before, you know, with acres. That was successful. We sold to a company called Curly. We did most of the things that we said we were gonna do. We're just trying to do it bigger now. And Amargosa was good to me, so I wanted to come back and go for it again. But I welcome all the comments. I know there's people that want to talk, and, and I think we can have a good, a good conversation about it.
Then I'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. So John, go ahead.
My name is John Bostea, B-O-S-T-E, and I'm speaking as the Vice Chairman of the Town of Amargosa Valley. I request that my comments be included in the minutes and in the written record. I want to thank you for the opportunity to comment on WV 2210, a waiver of Nye County Code in Prump, which is a, uh, Prump code to allow marijuana to be grown outdoors for the MJ Distributing cultivation and production. The town of Amargosa is strongly opposed to MJ Distributing growing marijuana outdoors. That was brought forth at the meeting that was held in Amargosa Valley as chairman. Before we made the approval for the moving of the 1,212 building, it was stipulated that there would be indoor grow only. There would be no outdoor grow because of the experience that was in, uh, the 17, 2017 and 2018, uh, grow. On the issue that was just brought up about the hemp is that if you ha- it's my understanding, and I'm not an expert, but it's my understanding that if you have a smell from hemp, it is because you have both male and female plants. And the industry of hemp, the biggest production of hemp is to eliminate the male plant. And so if you have smell that was talked about by your board, it is because that hemp grower has both male and female plants. And that what's, what causes the smell. On April, uh, I got it there. On December the 10th, MJ Holding Incorporated filed a Form 10K with the, uh, request for sections 13 and 15 of the Security Exchange Act of 1934. This is a corporation that is owned by foreign people. It brought forth the foreign people. Then the MJ Holding, uh, the MJ Holdings then had an agreement with the MJ Distributing Company, which then formed the Distributing C202 LLC and the MJ Distributing P13 LLC, which is, uh, the applicant for this waiver. This is a scam of the corporations. Okay, if, if, uh, if you're gonna limit me to three minutes of public, the thing is, is that I want you to realize that this is large corporations using the scam of using LLCs. They are transferring property and they're not paying taxes.
Thank you.
And the town is highly objectioned, and for anything to go forward, they've got to come back to the Town of Amargosa.
Thank you, John. Anybody on the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Say your name, spell for the record.
Yes, sir. Uh, Lab, L-A-B-O-S-S-I-E-R-E. I'm torn because I want more businesses out where we live, and I really want them there too. This problem stems not from us. They had a great plan 18 months ago when they came here, came and talked to us, and all the delays and everything here, now they're just trying to make money. You know, they're 18 months into this, and now they're trying to change their plan because their system that they had didn't fall through. The county needs a better system so that the people that are trying to get these licenses know how to get their licenses and get their steps down there. There is no outdoor grow currently growing on in, in Amargosa. Those outdoor greenhouses have been empty for three years. They had one year worth of crops there, and they've never gone back in there. There's no hemp being grown out there. We had one person who made money growing hemp out there. He'll be coming back to you now that he's got his legal problems solved to try and get a license again, and I hope you give him one. You know, we, we need a faster system in the county for businesses. We can't just keep dragging these people through over and over and over, or we're eventually gonna have no businesses in this county. Thank you.
I'll, I'll hold my comment. Thank you.
Joe Burdzenski, B-U-R-D-Z-I-N-S-K-I. Uh, I'm against any kind of outdoor growing of hemp or marijuana anywhere in Nye County. And just a little levity here, I think number nine. nine, agenda item stinks. Thank you.
Anybody on the phone? It's him.
No, Chair.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Joe Brezny, B-R-E-Z-N-Y, here representing Curaleaf, and I'm here with?
Claudia King, K-I-N-G. I do compliance for the State of Nevada for Curaleaf.
And we're here to speak in opposition to the measure, uh, just because of the proximity. Uh, we're not against additional marijuana, uh, facilities in Amargosa. It's just the, the addresses tell the story. They're applying for 2215 East Anvil Road and we're at 1939 East Anvil Road. So we have the outdoor cultivation permit. We're not using it right now, but we're a quarter of a mile from them. Uh, the devil in the details on this is that there is no state standard right now for an acceptable distance. There used to be under medical. It was five miles, but that went away and now it's on a case-by-case basis. So the old standard is 20 times the distance that there is between our two properties. But, uh, what we think could be a solution to this was be, would be, we'd like to request a 60-day continuance because part of this process is the Department of Agriculture must do a determination of isolation specifically on this point to determine if there is an acceptable distance between the two properties. The, it's not required that they do that before they come to you. It's not prohibited that they do that before they come to you. And so we would like to argue that it would be more appropriate because the distance is 20 times closer than the last standard to ask for a 60-day continuance and request the applicant complete their, uh, Department of Agriculture determination of isolation and then take a look at it once the, the Department of Agriculture has spoken. Thank you. We can take any questions for us, too.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you. Any, any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Can I just respond to that? To what was you said? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Just, just, just for clarity. First, I think, I don't, I've never met the gentleman, but that's the company that I actually built out there. So I had the first outdoor grow and in three years, it wasn't one, in three years, we never had cross-contamination on the same property because you use females. You don't get smell from a male and female. You get the smell from the flower. If you have any males, that's where you get pollen. That's kind of the farmer side of it. The 60-day thing, that's a little bit tricky right there because going back to the, we're farming out here. It's a, it's a, it's a photo s, season. So you plant in June, July, and then you harvest in November. If you did, if you take 60 days, you lost your year. So that's a little bit, I think, disingenuous as far as that's concerned.
May I ask a question, Chair? Since, uh, since you go, um, you plant outside, of course, you would need to have seedlings now to be able to go outside. Do you have seedlings inside your greenhouse now to be planted?
No, we don't. But do you, there's a method to actually get those, and the other way to do it is...
You could buy them, I guess, already done by someone else.
Right.
But the fact is, you don't go plant seeds outside. You take seedlings after...
You want to do seedlings, that's correct.
After they've been produced inside of a greenhouse.
Right, right.
Then you move them outdoors so that you're successful.
They acclimate them.
And you're not at that stage yet.
Right, that's correct.
Correct? Thank you.
But you can also use mothers, and then, and then you get the females. So they're all, they're all, they're complete clones of the, of the woman, of the lady. So that's why you're never going to get cross-contamination. Any more questions?
I, I'd like to make a comment. Um, I, I, I appreciate, so I appreciate all the comments here, uh, made by the public today. Um, it's a little tricky with Amargosa. Amargosa always likes to come and say, "Well, you know, we want more business. Well, we want this, we want that. We want a lot of things." But they are typically, one individual specifically, likes to come and typically oppose everything and create as much government roadblocks as he possibly can to stop those businesses from going there. So I, I don't think you can have both sides of that coin. Either you want to see businesses and you want to help them get through the, the process and get them going, or you're just going to continue to show up here and attempt to usurp our authority to be able to grant these licenses. Um, and, and then people get frustrated with doing business out in Amargosa. So, I mean, you tell us what you want because I'm, I'm inclined to, to support these guys and let them do what they do best. Let them go out there and do business. I can appreciate the comments from the, uh, from the other gentleman, from the other company. I think he's bringing some of the, he's bringing something forward that needs to be ultimately addressed by the state, and I think that'll have a trickle-down effect if the state determine, makes a different determination than we were to determine here today. So I, I see no harm in approving and saying, "Hey, look, you know what? Go forth. You have our blessing." And then if the state comes back with something different, I think then we can have that conversation at that time. But I don't like putting roadblocks in front of the carts that are dragging the horse down the hill. I mean, that's a very backwards approach to doing this. I say, "You know what? You have our blessing. You guys figure it out. Obviously, there's some personal between business and previous business. You guys will figure that out very quickly." And I think when everybody's doing well and their businesses are both succeeding, it'll be an afterthought. But here, here in the moment, it's kind of like, you know, I don't want to be between you guys, putting a roadblock between people. I don't think that's an appropriate use of government force there. I don't like that. So those are just my comments.
Mr. Jabor?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Paris, for the information. We're, we are well aware, uh, time is of the essence, and actually, you're a little late in trying to grow outdoor, right? Even though November will be upon us really soon. The Vice Chair is correct in saying when you went before him, uh, there was a different standard and request, and this is a request now of the County Commission to give a waiver and approve a waiver. Uh, will you, are your plans to do anything with the indoor grow?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
So we have, we, we already have, Commissioner, uh, we already have the, the structures, the pre-approved structures ready to go. What had happened is, because we got some delays, we had to get the, the CCB to come back out and then re-inspect a couple of different things. And I think we, that's going to happen in the next week or so. But you, you can buy seed, you can buy seeds, you can buy mothers, is what we call them, and you can bring them on, and you can get hundreds of clones in a very, 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 very small amount of time. So we're, we're, we're ready. We're prepared to do this. But that's why if it was delayed by even 30 days, then it would be, it would start to get more and more difficult to do it that way.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you have something?
Well, let me just come right out and say it. I'm totally against outdoor grow. I don't want any outdoor grows. I'm disappointed we have an outdoor grow currently in Amargosa as it exists. We went through a lot here in, uh, Nye County when it came to hemp, and I don't see any reason for an outdoor grows to be allowed in Nye County at all. So unless they are so remote, it's ridiculous, and people won't complain. So unfortunately, that's my position. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I have had, we've had public comment. We've had, uh, the folks that are responsible for the process. I guess I'm going to ask the Commissioners what, uh, what's their pleasure. I'm going to call for a question. You need some more comment?
I don't think we had a motion yet, but, uh...
You're right, we don't have a motion.
But with that, you, and I can appreciate Commissioner Strickland's position on that. I, I think special circumstance should be given. That gentleman was the previous company, so they know how to do it. And I don't think they're going to necessarily, I don't think, it's not in their best interest to damage the other company. I think they just want to do their own thing in their own lane.
Okay, and I appreciate you bringing up that discussion because I should probably be more present by saying that the Department of Agriculture is the one who should be making this determination whether or not these two grows are too close. That's not our job. We're not, we don't have that skill. And so to, to imagine, we wouldn't, that all of that was in place when it came to hemp, if you remember. You couldn't grow hemp outdoors too close to an, a marijuana grow. So there is cross-contamination with the kind of winds we have.
That was actually not true. You, we could not prevent hemp in any way, shape, fashion, or form because it was agriculture.
But it would turn around and it would contaminate marijuana.
The actual separation was from marijuana to marijuana.
Okay, so excuse me. Marijuana to marijuana. So there's an existing marijuana to marijuana at the Department of Agriculture. There's a form that's called Determination of Isolation that if we do a well job, we should request that, that be performed. My opinion.
I'd just like to comment that we intended for all of these things to be inside originally, with the exception of the hemp. Um, but I didn't realize hemp had such a bad odor at the time. Nobody let us know that. So now I am really disappointed in the whole program period. Um, and I think the whole point of growing marijuana for medical purposes was just a foot in the door for recreational. And so I'm, I don't like the whole program in general. I know the sheriff was not happy with it, um, at the time, the sheriff at the time. So, um, I'm with you, Deborah. I can't support outdoor grow. I mean, we're already putting up with the odor from indoor grow, and it's not working out well.
Okay. Well, are you complete?
I'm true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we, we heard, um, we heard officially the Vice Chair of Amargosa Town Board come before us and say that, uh, that the town is opposed, they're opposed to this particular issue. I don't believe the town is opposed to the issue versus what you voted on and submitted a letter of support to the County Commission when they first, uh, came to be and presented their, their project to the Town of Amargosa. So because this is a variance, asking us to waive, uh, would it be appropriate that we just ask? And it won't take the 60 days. It won't even take close to 60 days. Would it be appropriate to ask that they go back before the Town of Tonopah, uh, Town of Amargosa, Town Board and represent your project and your waiver to them and then come back before us, before we take this?
Sounds appropriate to me. I can support that.
Mr. Paris, or your, whoever wants to speak. Do you guys have an issue with that? The other requests come in from the Commissioner?
Hello, my name is Al Reasonover, last name R-E-A-S-O-N-O-V-E-R with MJ Holdings. And, uh, I do have a comment regarding going back to Amargosa again. As you could see from, I have had a conversations two days ago with Mr. Bosta, and he's adamantly against outdoor. So there's five board members, and this is what I'm told from the board members there. One cannot vote because they work with us, that leaves four. One never shows up, so leaves three. We have John Bosta that's adamantly against it, and he's one guy that always votes with him. We have no, uh, you know, really no choice than to just come to you instead. I mean, if we go to a two-to-two vote or a two-to-one, we're outvoted. We've already been voted in when Paris founded Acres for an outdoor grow. So we were already on the outdoor grow already. We're the ones that left and went next door. So while we are on the same property already doing outdoor grow, we never had cross-contamination with ourself. Acres, Curaleaf, never complained about us being five seconds from them because we're on the same property. We're doing the grow already there. So what's the difference in being a quarter mile away? We're aware that we need agriculture. We're aware of that CCB. We're just asking for your blessing to move forward and do what we already been doing the last three years. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, I guess I'm going to look for a motion. Anybody?
I, I'm going to make a motion then. I'm going to give it a shot. I'm going to make a motion to, given that last testimony right there especially, I'll make a motion to approve. See where it goes. Approve the waiver.
A motion? Do I have a second?
Jabor seconds.
Motion, a second. So we've had public comment. We've heard from the applicants. We've heard from the county Commissioners.
I'll, I'll make one final comment, um, if anybody's on the fence on this. If the CCB has an issue, I think if any other state government entity has an issue with it, I think it'll be back before us. I think what they're asking is very simple. They're just asking for our blessing, and it's from what they've, what we've already previously supported. And I can definitely appreciate where Commissioner Strickland and Commissioner Cox come from with the outdoor grow. I do appreciate that. And, and I support that 100%. There's no outdoor growing within the Perump Regional Planning District.
Would you consider a friendly amendment that the applicant do a determination of isolation with the Department of Agriculture?
I believe the gentleman just said that, so I don't want to make that a condition here because it'll come back anyways.
No, they, they did not agree to do that, that I'm aware of.
Well, they have to.
You have to.
Do you come back onto the record, please?
Please.
They have to get the permission from...
But the, the process is coming to us and then go there, not go there and then come to us.
Maybe I was talking too fast. We do need clearance from agriculture and CCB.
So if there's an issue there, it'll come back.
Still can't deal with the smell.
I just don't want to be...
The smell's going to happen indoor or outdoor. If you look next door, even with an outdoor greenhouse, the size of the fans are the size of a Mack truck. They're spinning 50 miles an hour. You're going to get probably less smell from outdoor than you're going to do indoor because of the consistency of the fans blowing.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's why they have to put filters in them and keep them clean.
Commissioners, I have a motion in a second.
Well, we're still, we're still discussing. What about the Town of Amargosa?
Yes. I think we need, we owe them the respect of at least considering what their opinion is, regardless of who made it. There's still five members, and...
So, again, I have a motion on, on the floor, and I have a second. I've had a lot of discussion. I need to know what we want to do. So I'm going to call for the question.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Jabor is aye.
Jabor is aye. Three, two, go. I think you still need to go talk to the board of, the board in Amargosa.
Yes, move that out, would you please?
You got an issue there?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to take care of that. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Let us know. Come on back.
Lunch.
Comfort break. Yeah, I'm looking at 12 o'clock. Does anybody want to go lunch? Is there something pressingly that I have to do right this second for anybody?
That's right. There's a first and a last item. You want to do, uh...
I'm going to call for, call for lunch, so. Well, an hour and a half from now, so that's 12. It's going to be quarter to one.
1:30?
30?
1:30, an hour.
Sometimes you can't get...
We're taking a lunch break till 1:30 if you didn't hear us over here talking. Thank you.
Yeah, and then you have to choke your food down.
All right, guys, it's 1:30. I'm happy to see that the Commissioners are all here except for one. So I'll just let the, let the record show that Donna, Donna is not here at this moment. Okay, uh, let's move to item number 10.
Item 10, 10, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Public hearing discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Bill Number 2022-04, a bill proposing to amend Nye County Code Title 17, Comprehensive Land Use Planning and Zoning by adding Chapter 17.13 entitled Special Use Permits, to establish land use and permitting requirements applicable to certain types of land uses, including definitions, special uses requiring special use permits, applications, grounds for suspension and revocation, and time limitations, and providing for the severability, constitutionality, and effective date thereof, and other matters properly relating thereto. And two, read the title of the bill into the record.
So I am going to make a recommendation for you.
Okay.
I'd like to be able to continue this item till around August 23rd, which is, puts us, puts us at the next August meeting, I believe. Can somebody correct me on that?
16th.
16th, okay. So we move it to the 16th. Um, I know that there's some issues still stemming around this.
Right.
So if I can get a motion...
Make a motion to continue August 16th, 10 a.m.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Um, there's no need for public comment because we're going to be moving... There's no need for public comment because we're gonna be moving the item. Is that okay, DA? Okay, thank you. So with that, call for the question.
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Jabor's aye, 4-0, show me the... 4-1, excuse me, Donna Cox.
Do we still, because we're continuing, do we still need to read the title? No? Okay, because we continued.
Just continue, thank you, sir, for asking a question.
I think you came back for lunch for that.
Item number 11.
Item 11, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Hearing to show cause, discussion and deliberation to determine, one, if a nuisance and safety issue still exists on the property, or, two, if there is no nuisance or safety issue associated with the property, and, three, possible direction to staff to abate and/or remove the nuisance and safety conditions for property located at 2831 East Deadwood Street, Prump, Nevada. Assessors' parcel number 041-061-07. Kenny Caseras and Denise Seda, property owners.
So knowing that, knowing that we think we have this thing taken care of, you can tell us all about it.
Yes, commissioners, so the house has been completely boarded up.
And your name is what?
Steve Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. The property's been cleaned up, the house is all boarded up now. We took, there's updated photos in the backup, if you want to look at those, but we no longer believe that a nuisance or safety issue exists now that they've done that. So if you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Is there a question from the board?
Just good work.
Okay, knowing this is a show cause hearing, just want to make sure that we know that this is gonna be remedied. So I'm gonna ask for some public comment, and then we'll go... We have any, any on the phone?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners, this is Mark Gancarz, G-A-N-C-A-R-Z. I'm with Nye County Code Enforcement, and I'm here for any questions you have.
I'm pretty sure that your assistant director answered the questions, but do you have anything more you have to add to it?
Yes, the property owner, Kenny Caseras, was in the audience there. He texted me just before lunch, he had an emergency, he had to leave immediately. I had a conversation with Mr. Caseras, and he does have a contractor, and they're gonna go through engineering, and he is gonna have that home rebuilt, have the foundation repaired. But he did secure the home, got rid of a lot of junk and debris from the property, and he plans on doing this soon. And that was the last conversation I had with him before this meeting.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark, we appreciate that input. Is there any public here, any public comment on this item? Other than on the phone? Thank you. So, anything up in Tonopah? Don't see anything. Is everybody awake? Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna close public comment. Commissioners, I have a motion.
Clarification that the nuisance was abated, was abated.
Yes.
Thank you.
What do you want to do, commissioners?
Uh, motion, I would like to make a motion that a nuisance no longer exists on this property.
Second.
A motion and a second, and that would be 2831 East Deadwood Street, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
So amended.
So, no, public comment's been done, everything, everything seems to be in good order. Let's call for the question.
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Jabor's aye. 4-1. We'll show Donna's...
Thank you, commissioners.
You're more than welcome, thank you, Mark. Have a good day. Thank you, Director.
You too, I'll be there for the, for the next item.
Oh, yes, you are for the next item. Okay, item number 12.
Item 12, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Public hearing, discussion and deliberation on ZCMP-22-1. An application for a conforming zone change to change one parcel totaling approximately 4.844 acres from village residential to rural homestead located at 401 W. Bonarch Road, Prump, Nevada. Assessors' parcel number 029-642-18. Robert Sanchez, owner slash applicant.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Steve Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. This was a, continued from a couple of months ago. There were some questions about some of the code compliance issues on the property. So currently, the only violation is the, the farm animals, the horses. And this, this zone change, if it gets approved, will then resolve that issue. So, um, the, the property owner has a building permit to build a house, it's ready to be issued. Basically, they're just waiting for the zone change to be approved before actually getting the permit and start, starting construction of the house.
That makes sense.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mark, did you have anything?
No, that's, um, Mark Gancarz, G-A-N-C-A-R-Z. That's pretty much it. He was just waiting for the zone change to make sure that goes through, so there's not an issue. Mr. Sanchez has done everything requested by code enforcement and taken care of it and made sure it was taken care of properly.
Very good, thank you. And I see that she's, he's here, so...
Thank you for that, Mark. Uh, yes, Robert Sanchez, S-A-N-C-H-E-Z, and I am the owner at 401 West Bonarch Road. And Mark is correct, we've done everything that's been asked of us by code enforcement. I was waiting for this opportunity and actually for the zone change because the animals are really critical to us. I was diagnosed with cancer in 2018. They did a Polaris DNA. I was given two options. One was to take care of it myself, or to do the radical prostatectomy. I opted to take care of it myself. I've lost 35 pounds through proper diet and exercise. They told me eating organics was the way to go. What I discovered after much research is the organics in our stores isn't truly organic. So our goal was to come here, create our own property, grow our own truly organic fruits and vegetables. The animals eat only organic alfalfa, and therefore their manure is helping me to create a compost that's gonna let me see exactly what's going into the ground as I grow, everything to help myself with my, uh, medical condition. So that was the whole purpose for this change.
We thank you for that, appreciate it.
And actually, uh, two years ago, I, I sat here with my neighbor in support of him and his hemp farm, and I recall its time, I can't remember whether it was Donna or Deborah that said that based on the acreage of the properties at the Blagg Estates, they should never have been zoned as residential, I believe it was you, that they should have been zoned as residential homestead to begin with, so...
Yeah, the, the VR, it's been a problem. VR 20's been a problem all over town.
Yeah.
And it needs to be rural homestead 4.5. We've got some problems, but we're working through that in our master plan. Thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Thank you.
And good luck with your health.
Do it.
No, we don't. Any public comment on this item? Tonopah? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll make a motion. A motion to approve ZCMP-22-1 based on the RPC's recommendations and staff findings and subject to all the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Jabor, seconds.
I have a motion and a second. We've had public comment, or maybe, thank you very much for your...
Thank you.
Board, call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Jabor's aye, again, 4-1.
And thank you, staff, for doing further cleanup of our zoning. Thank you.
VR 20's gotta go.
I think this was a good example, just a little extra time to get some ducks in a row.
Yep, it worked out well.
Yep.
Item number 13.
Item 13, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Public hearing, discussion and deliberation on ZCMP-22-5. An application for a conforming zone change to change one parcel totaling approximately 1.1 acres from neighborhood commercial to general commercial on property located at 3760 East Alfalfa Street, Prump, Nevada. Assessors' parcel number 042-451-08. 3760 East Alfalfa Street, Prump, Nevada. LLC proper, property owner, Red Apple Fireworks applicant, Mark H. Fiorentino, agent.
Go ahead, Steve.
Hey, Steve Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. This was heard by the RPC May 11th, the RPC recommended approval, six to zero. It is a conforming zone change, the, the purpose of this is just to add that fourth parcel onto the Red Apple Fireworks project for their, their permanent warehouse. So that's all this is.
I thank you for that. I see the applicant is here, do you want to say anything, Mr. Fiorentino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mark Fiorentino, F-I-O-R-E-N-T-I-N-O, representing the applicant. Just very briefly, I wanted to thank Mr. Osborne and the staff for their patience in working with this on it. I know you're very familiar with this project. To confirm for the record, we, the conditions are the same as the previous ones that you've already approved. We've accepted them and actually begun to comply with them already. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Or your conditions of approval, so all agreed to and so on?
Yes, sir.
I guess the, the real question is, is the last, the last time fireworks came before the board, there were a lot more questions, and I felt like we didn't have enough answers, so...
Well, this here was for the warehouse portion?
I'm aware, I'm just, just leaving it to the board. I mean, I was listening, so I just want to know if there's any concerns.
Well, the only concern is, is that how long is gonna, how much longer do we have to wait?
That's a big question.
Now that we have the property...
Don't be so modest.
Moving forward, we're on our way.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Are you gonna take it further? All conditions is outlined by staff report?
That's a given within the approval, but I'll...
Second.
I'll include that part of the motion.
All right, thank you very much. Any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Fiorentino.
Excuse me, Mark?
Yes, sir.
We just never see you for long enough. If you don't mind, just, just a few moments, please, or just...
You want me to stay here at the... Look, I got a lot more moments sitting in the back where you can look at me all you want. I have several other items on the agenda, but thank you, I enjoy being here, actually.
Okay, well, we appreciate you being here, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, no public comment. I guess I'm gonna ask for the question.
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Jabor's aye. That's 4-1. Item number 14.
Chair, just one more. Tim, could you shoot Donna a text while, while we're in between, just a reminder that the meeting started again?
Sure.
Asking too much, thank you.
Item 14, 10 o'clock timed item for possible action. Public hearing, discussion and deliberation on ZCMP-22-7. An application for a conforming zone change to change one parcel totaling approximately 0.78 acres from light industrial to general commercial located at 340 South Emery Street, Prump, Nevada. Assessors' parcel number 038-233-16. Dean Love, trustee, dash, property owner, Carolyn Walker, applicant.
So the, the blue building is gonna change to a different color, right?
We make that a condition.
Uh, Steve Osborne, O-S-B-O-R-N-E. Yeah, this is the existing adult superstore, and they're changing it to a pawn shop, which actually requires a different zoning, the general commercial zoning for a pawn shop. So, um, this was recommended for approval by the RPC 6-0, and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate that. Applicant, you're here, come on.
Adrian Chase, C-H-A-S-E. I'm actually the son for the applicant, I'm the manager of the pawn shop to answer any questions you may have.
I only have one. Can he, can you become the super pawn of Prump?
We hope to be the only pawn shop in Prump at some point.
I thought you were.
We do have competition out there, so...
We do.
Any public comment on this item? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thanks, Sam.
And I guess I'll do it this time. You're aware, Mr. Chase, you're aware of the, uh, conditions?
We are aware of all the conditions, including painting of the building and removing the sign, that is underway. We had some mechanical issues with a piece of equipment that we rented this week, where it would have already been much farther along in the process.
Okay, with that...
Yes, parking lots have already been restripped and everything, we're bringing everything up to, to good condition as, as a...
They're putting their best foot forward. So, I'm, I'm really happy with what they're doing down there. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with all the, uh, conditions set forward.
Jabor, seconds.
I have a motion and a second, have, I had public comment requested, and I don't see anything else we have to do, call for the question.
Aye.
Jabor's aye.
Aye.
Well, have fun, go, 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 don't get stuff. Item number 15.
Item 15, sitting as the Nye County Board of Health for possible action discussion and deliberation regarding public health priorities for Nye County.
And here he comes, Mr. Griffin. Thank you for coming down.
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Griffith, G-R-I-F-F-I-T-H. I was recently appointed to be the Nye County Health Officer, and I am here to get your direction, commissioners, as to what your priorities are and what I can focus on as I start this endeavor. That's a huge question.
I know it is. I, I do have, and you're probably, I don't know if you've seen it or not, but a lot of us have been seeing it. There's been a lot of accidents and a lot of issues with teens and mid, mid-aged individuals. I'm thinking we got some mental health issues that we still have to work on. You know, we, we keep saying it, we definitely need to work on it a lot more. I think there's another agenda item on here that I'd like to work on sooner or later, too.
I think, I, I've absolutely seen that. I think some of you know what I do in my private life over at my other office. Mental health is a huge issue that we deal with just nationwide right now, on top of opioid abuse and different things like that. It's definitely something that's at the top. I've been in discussions with Lorena and with Corinne Smith, who's Health and Human Services. We also, if, um, everybody was paying attention, there was just a bill passed this month at a federal level, or they're getting ready to pass it or working on it, but the part of the gun package is a lot of federal money for mental health. So I feel like it's a good time to be paying attention, focus, and try and start setting up some programs for that would be fantastic with your support.
My concern is you didn't need to match mental health and guns together, that was bad.
I couldn't hear you, sir, I'm sorry.
Point is, is that we got mental health issues. A lot of it comes from the things that we've been going through for the last three years. I mean, it's just, it's caused a lot of problems with people.
Absolutely.
Chair, I was excited, Mr. Griffith, that Friday we had a health fair, it was sponsored by the Nye, Nye County Coalition, and, uh, they had several vendors out there. But I, what I love seeing is, and I mentioned it to the other commissioners, was the health nurse was out there, and she's got a mobile unit now. So they, she's taken a, an ambulance and built two mobile units that we need to make sure she is supported in any way we can. She's going around and she's doing, um, pre, the shots necessary for children to get into school. She offers the COVID testing. There's a, a gamut of things she can bring to rule Nye County, if you will. So I would love it if you'd put your eyes on that, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The commissioners?
I know the, I noticed, you know, the mental health is, uh, seems to be a reoccurring trend, but I, I think it's, there's a lot more underneath that umbrella, and we should be looking at a variety of different things within that. So, um, I think you're kind of getting a broad stroke from the board at this juncture, and I'd be looking forward to seeing what you come back with and saying, hey, here's a couple of key places we kind of looking at, based on what we've discussed, what you've heard, what you're seeing, what you're seeing from your perspective as well, and, and then we can have a collaborative way forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else on the board? Donna?
No, I think I'm fine with it.
Commissioner Jabor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Griffiths, for accepting the position, the appointment. And I'm, I'm glad to know that you've been reaching out to the professionals in, in search of what, what the need is throughout the county. So I look forward to you coming back, and we will put a, put a list, I know that you've asked us to put some ideas together, put a list together to give you additional guidance besides your professionalism, so thank you.
Thank you.
I know that you got kind of the stream here is obviously mental health, and however that breaks down into different categories. that breaks down into different categories. Something I know that you, since you do that in your practice, would be something for us to actually get some good input from and help us make some other decisions.
Excited to help. I know, I was at a summit recently, a few weeks ago, and one of the big pushes right now is that they're creating a health district in the central Nevada with the rural districts. I know that we have Clark County and you have Wausau, who also has their own. Something to push into is the state's kind of trying to push off some of that responsibility to us. But I think based off of what we can, the key points we can develop in the next year or so to get the ball rolling will help us start to tackle some of these issues, whether that's a vaccination, whether that's mental health, whether that's the ability to have family planning is definitely all things that we're excited to, I'm, I'm excited to bring to the community from private practice and from public to see how lacking we are for providers and services for, for everybody.
I just hope that we're not scaring ourselves when we hear about the coronavirus creeping back in and people wanting to get masks on and stuff. So I know that you're going to keep us informed of what's happening there, right?
I get lots of emails, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? That's it? Good. All right. Let's move on to item number, sitting as the unincorporated town of Perump. Item number sixteen.
Item sixteen, ten o'clock timed item for possible action, presentation, discussion and deliberation of the fiscal year 2022 dash 2023 Lakeview Executive Golf Course Annual Plan.
I see the gentleman coming up.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Aaron Hensley, last name H-E-N-S-L-E-Y. I am a Senior Operations Manager with CorSCO and presenting with me today is your General Manager at Lakeview, Tanner Bound, last name B-O-W-N. We just want to give a brief recap of this most current fiscal year that is going to conclude here in a couple of weeks as well as answer any questions that you may have for our 2022-2023 annual plan submittal. A little background about Lakeview. Lakeview is an executive, eighteen-hole executive golf course. It's a par sixty. That means it's a little shorter course than traditional. It's great for juniors and seniors and women play, and we encourage that. Lakeview opened in nineteen seventy-nine and the town of Perump purchased Lakeview in June of 2018. At the end of 2018, the town struck a deal with our company, CorSCO, to manage the day-to-day operations of Lakeview and we began that relationship on an initial five-year term beginning, I believe, in January of 2019. A brief history of CorSCO. We are, again, a golf management firm. We were founded in nineteen eighty-nine. We've been doing business for roughly thirty-three years. We have forty clients to date across six different states and ninety percent of our clients are municipal organizations, municipal operations. Every CorSCO property that develops plans for their clients does so around four key operational tenants. Those are driving financial results for our clients, environmental stewardship, building robust community outreach calendars, and engaging in meaningful stakeholder communication. So looking back on this most recent year, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, one of the major issues that needs to be discussed and, and brought up was the severe storm event that happened in, in your area at the end of July. Lakeview obviously was not left unskated throughout that process and it being an outdoor recreational activity was certainly adversely affected during that process or during that time period at the end of July last year. So we had a great plan to start the year and then unforeseen circumstances really hit us and, and had us behind the eight ball. Specific impacts were numerous holes were flooded. The golf course was actually closed for a short period of time in totality while we needed to wait for the floodwaters to recede and for some of the water to soak back into the ground. Several downed trees, I'm sure that was the case all across the town. Lakeview being a golf course, we have plenty of trees. There was several downed trees, several limbs, tumbleweeds, and, and just a really complete mess across the entire, entire property. We lost about forty K in equipment, equipment, chemical, and cleanup-related expenses that were unforeseen last year, but we did work with the town to itemize those things and hopefully we'll be receiving some type of reimbursement to the golf fund once the insurance claim is finalized. Most notable and, and probably that caused us the most challenge was what happened to our pump stations. For some reason, unbeknownst to us, the pump station room at Lakeview, and that's the, the lifeline of the golf course that, that allows us to irrigate the golf course on an ongoing basis, and the maintenance facility are both located underground or below ground level. So with the amount of rain that this area took on, those two buildings were submerged in water, a couple of feet of water actually, for quite some time. Over a week before we could access into that room, the onsite staff was somewhat nervous about entering floodwater and with electricity and electrical panels and, and all the things that you can imagine inside of a pump station room and in a maintenance facility. So there was a point in time where we couldn't apply any water to the golf course post-storm and we couldn't get any of our equipment on the golf course to even effectuate or begin cleanup of the process until roughly two weeks after the storm, until again the floodwater had dissipated and the water on the golf course had completely soaked in. We couldn't take heavy equipment back out to a flooded property. We would just create more damage to the property. So that was a, a major hurdle that we had to deal with right, right out of the gate. Just so you know, personally, for me, I got assigned as a Senior Operations Manager to Lakeview in June of last year. So within four to five weeks of, I, I had just made my first site visit at the end of June, met the, the onsite team at that time, began to, to meet some of the stakeholders and get a feel for the property. And then, of course, we, we had to deal with this event. And that was eye-opening and shocking. However, ongoing cleanup, we have a very small crew at Lakeview, as, as you folks know. Our outside crew consists of only four employees. So we're, we're also not a, a cleanup crew. We're a golf course management crew. We have mowers and weed eaters and edgers. So cleaning up all of that debris did take some time. It was probably a ninety to one hundred and twenty day process before we really established the golf course back to its pre-storm, pre-storm nature. The inability to irrigate the golf course and apply the chemicals that we needed to the greens conditions caused green, greens issues again. Turf loss on all eighteen greens that had to be reestablished once again, beginning in the middle of August. And that process lasted. Trying to grow grass in, in this climate in, in Perump in August, July, August, September is very challenging to say the least. However, we did get past all of that and we began the phased reopening of the greens in December of 2021 with all greens back open and complete cleanup done. Complete cleanup of the, of everything but the greens was done about October-ish, but the greens, we began to re-phase the reopening in December and they were all brought back online in January of this year. Some other changes that took place this, over the last fiscal year, again, we had two leadership positions transition out. That was our General Manager and our Golf Course Superintendent. Tanner, we brought on to backfill in the General Manager position and he's been a superstar to say the least. We are lucky to have him. The town is lucky to have him in, as the leader of that property and I want to say thank you for all the, all the work that you've done so far. He's done excellent work. In February of this year, the Superintendent transitioned out. That provided opportunity for the Assistant Superintendent at Lakeview. Again, a, a maintenance crew of four, but we do have an assistant there. So an opportunity presented itself for him to step up into a leadership position. He's very comfortable with the site. He knows the systems. He knows where our challenges are and where our opportunities are. So it was a natural fit to slot him into the Head Superintendent position at Lakeview. So that also happened last year. During last year's presentation to the Commission, there was some discussion about potentially having an advisory committee of some, of some form, either assigning one that already exists to the golf course or creating a, a golf course advisory committee. We actually love that idea. We have those at several of our facilities. So when we heard that, we were completely on board with that. Immediately after that, and as soon as I made my first site visit, I made communication, I reached out to the town and started that discussion. And at that time, there was some discussion on was it, did it need to be formalized? Was it going to be part of something that was already existing or was it going to be standalone at the facility itself? And then shortly thereafter, the storm happened and naturally more pressing issues became the point of focus for the Commission and, and the Town Manager. So that discussion on how was that going to look going forward was kind of put on hold. However, we, we run several of these at, at our properties. So we didn't put it on hold. We said, hey, let's go ahead and form it from avid golfers that are at the facility. There were several of them that stepped up here last year and presented. We, we want those people on the committee as well. We need, we need to hear everyone's opinion. So we began the painstaking work of, of reaching out to avid golfers and locals saying, hey, we created a, a, bylaws and a formal structure for the committee to operate under. And we reached out to the, the community and of course, the onsite team could put us in, in touch with those who might have an interest. We created some documents that kind of explained the outline of how this advisory committee would work on an ad hoc level at Lakeview. And we had, I think we had eleven initial signups. We interviewed them. We whittled it down to the six that are currently acting in, in an advisory role at Lakeview. And some of them are, are here today and I'm sure that they'll be speaking with you to give their perspective on, on how the golf course is operating over the, over the last year. So that was exciting and, and we were happy to do that. Another point that was discussed during last year's Commission was we had a few customers come up and say that they wanted to volunteer at the golf course. And we're apparently being told by the onsite team at the time that we can't do volunteer work at the golf course. And that was new to us, quite frankly, from, from CorSCO. We, we were unaware that those conversations were happening. We have no problem with volunteers at the golf course. Matter of fact, at a property like Lakeview, it probably makes the most sense with its small operations crew that has to prioritize tasks based on the cash flow that this property has. So we welcomed that. We immediately began working with the town again to formalize that. We couldn't, we have to make sure that it's, that it's legal and that we're protected from liability, but we did that. We got that work done within a couple of months and I'm happy to report that as of October of last year, we now have a formal volunteer program. We have a list up in the golf shop and as volunteer work becomes available, we're able to connect people who have raised their hands that I want to give back to, to volunteer specific tasks. Lastly, on, over the course of last fiscal year, before we get to this year, we wanted to reconnect with junior golf. I'm a product of junior golf. I know Tanner's a product of junior golf and most people get in the golf business because they started the game as, as, as kids. COVID-related issues and restrictions over the last couple of years had, had really put a damper on congregation and group-type outreach. So it was natural that the tournaments over the last several years were going to probably not participate at Lakeview. Junior programming was going to be cut down to a minimum. However, going into fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, COVID was kind of in the rearview mirror. We're, we're moving past that. So we tasked this, this young man here with revitalizing what was once a vibrant program with respect to junior golf at Lakeview. And he really hit the, hit the ground running and I think he wants to say a couple of words on that.
Thanks, Aaron. Junior golf near and dear to my heart, Aaron as well. I moved to Southern Nevada in 2013 and I heard a lot about junior golf in Perump. Larry Goins is a name that comes to mind and he has the Perump Valley Junior Golf. He had it flourishing for a number of years. Knowing that I took this position out here, I thought I could carry the torch in some way for junior golf. That was important to me. So what we've really done at Lakeview is first and foremost was get the middle school back out there. They had dropped a number of years and they had gone to Mountain Falls, but they're back out at Lakeview, which is fantastic for their practices and other events. We actually hosted a middle school tournament event in April at the golf course and it was shared with the Perump Valley Times. An article was shared in the Perump Valley Times about it. We co-hosted a junior golf event, actually with Mountain Falls. We don't feel like we need to be enemies with the other golf courses in town. So we co-hosted a clinic, which was fantastic. We created a junior golf league at Lakeview, which is Wednesday mornings at nine AM, which has been extremely successful. We have, we're creating a junior golf championship in August. It's August thirteenth and we've had a number of signups for that already. And we're looking to host junior camps here at the end of July as well. And that would be a more hands-on approach to teaching kids how to play the game of golf. All this will really increase the success of Lakeview and really promote youth athletics in general. So, thank you.
So again, in, in recap, looking at the financial review of, of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, it was really a tale of two stories. The first half of the year marred by flood-related challenges, severe weather-related challenges, the length of time it took to reestablish the golf course and make it marketable once again, the re-establishing the turf grass on the greens led to, from July one through December, rounds being down about twenty-six percent compared to plan, revenue being down about thirty-four percent compared to plan, and expenses up about nine percent compared to plan. However, once we turn the page, the second half of, of the fiscal year, that's January through June thirtieth, we are, rounds will trend down about two to three percent. However, revenues will finish up about five percent compared to plan and expenses will finish down one percent for the second half of the year. It was unfortunate that we kind of, through no fault of our own, kind of had to deal with an unforeseen set of circumstances. But what brings us encouragement is that through the successful execution of the plan that was created last year by the new onsite team, we saw objectively that our ideas were sound and that when executed, the second half of the year proved to be financially successful, kind of what we were expecting. So looking forward to 2022, 2023, which we have submitted for consideration, really we're looking to build, continue to build upon the momentum that we had out of the last half of this fiscal year that we're in now. We're going to add some, some additional programming as Tanner becomes more comfortable and continues to build relationships and our tournament committee begins to come up with new ideas for new events. We will add to the existing events that we were already running, which will create more golf activity. We also want to engage in some non-golf-related community events. That's something that CorSCO believes in. It's something that we know that within every facility that we operate, probably only ten to fifteen percent of the citizens in that facility actually play golf for a living. So we believe we have an obligation to our clients to come up with some type of facility, facility appropriate programming for the other eighty-five percent of the people that don't happen to golf, so that they can use Lakeview as well and experience Lakeview. Things that golf courses do that we've outlined in our plan for 2023 for the non-golf community could include movie nights. I'm sure you do that in your parks from time to time. We can do that at our open space as well. We can do open houses. We can do Easter egg hunts, all of which are outlined in, in our plan for this next fiscal year. With overall goal of obviously being, continuing to make Lakeview a recreational hub that can be enjoyed for many years to come, not only for the golfing community, but for those that as of today don't play golf yet. Hopefully they will someday. So before you and the plan, you will see a proposed budget in summary that calls for about fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty round starts, generating roughly four hundred thousand in facility revenue. We have budgeted about four hundred and eighty thousand in total facility expenses, leaving a net shortfall of eighty thousand. And we believe that with the secondary funding of the golf fund, that that will finally put Lakeview in a position to be self-sufficient without requiring further subsidy from the, from the golf fund to pay its way. So we're excited about that and we, especially from the performance that we just did, we believe that that's well within reach. To help support the rounds and the revenue growth, of course, Tanner and his team will continue to drive golf-related activity. There's substantial league play at Lakeview. League play occurs five days a week. There's scramble leagues on Tuesdays and Fridays, a ladies league that plays on Wednesdays, a men's league on Thursdays, and then Sundays. For some reason, they come together and there's a couples league on Sundays where they get together and the men and women compete together. Tanner and his team have also started what they call a monthly tournament series. That's a new event that takes place every month. There's a sub, again, a subsection of advisory committee members that are formed, I call it a fun committee, but because they're, they're developing ideas that can be implemented on a monthly basis that will attract people that, not only members that already play, but the people that like to play in friend, fun and friendly competition can take advantage of those events. We've been running those since February of this year. Every event has been sold out. So the market is telling us, yes, we want more of this type of stuff. And then of course, he gave a very detailed description of what he's been doing on the junior front. That is also a big part of what we intend to expand upon in the 2022, 2023 plan. I already discussed some of the free non-community events in there. We do have targeted in August to do the movie night. We have an animal adoption event that he's working on right now with a tentative date of October of this year. We're going to do a holiday open house in December. He's actually volunteered to dress up as Santa and take pictures with kids that arrive on that particular day. And that's excellent. We really like him playing the role there. And then we'll follow it up with an Easter egg hunt in spring of next year. Last but not least, we have, for your consideration, we're requesting three additional capital projects for this year in addition to what's already been approved that's slated to be exercised in fiscal year 2223. The three new projects are some pump station repairs at both the Willow Creek Pump Station that provides the water in to the Lakeview property and the onsite pump station at Lakeview, which we use to get the water onto the golf course. Both secondary backup pumps. One of them is completely failed. Quite frankly, it's already been pulled for diagnosis. That's the one at Lakeview. So we're currently only operating with one pump, which really restricts the amount of water that we can throw out at any one point in time. And the secondary pump at the Willow Creek Pump Station is showing significant signs of failure. We don't know what the extent of that one is just yet because we have not pulled it, but its outflow is not efficient right now. So we know that we're going to have to get in to look at that. The third project that we're proposing and we are seeking approval to proceed with is green renovation. The number one issue at Lakeview that we continue to, continues to be a source of concern at Lakeview is the conditions of the greens over a 12-month period of time. Namely, this time of year when it's the, the stress of the turf grass is at its highest. We wouldn't recommend doing the greens rebuild unless the pump stations were operational first. So under no circumstance would we attempt to rebuild greens or renovate greens without having the ability to adequately irrigate them on an ongoing basis. But again, the greens are much improved now. The customers tell us that. Our objective measures when we seek the voice of the customers tells us that as well through surveys and customer comments. I believe that some of the people here today will attest to that as well. However, even at their best, they're probably still not at market expectation. And we think that with the pump station upgrades, which will allow us to establish additional turf grass on the tees and fairways and allow us to irrigate the greens better, coupled with stripping the top, the current existing top layer of the greens off and reestablishing with Bermuda grass, which is more native to this particular climate in this area, it would thrive here and would really position Lakeview well into the future. So thank you for your time. We're going to be here and answer any questions that you have to the best of our ability. So just thank you for receiving that report.
Again, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation. Commissioner, you had something?
No, I just feel much better about this now that things are moving along from what they were originally. I like the idea that you're going to do recreation over there. I think that's going to be great for the kids in the area that aren't old enough to play golf and, you know, it kind of fills in for some of the other things. And I think it looks okay at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Last year, Mr. Hensley, I remember now you were on the phone.
No, that was my colleague, Mr. Bugby.
Mr. Bugby. Thank you. So I confused Bugby and Hensley.
Yes.
I was, if you were listening in, I was very critical last year as we were, we were very concerned that you were running, the property was running in the red. And out of the 40 clients that you mentioned that you had, I specifically asked, where did we sit? And we were one of three that wasn't doing so well. And of course, you stated, you know, the flood really took a hard hit here in Perump. It hit all of us, hit the roads, hit people, cars, their yards, their trees, their homes, everything and their businesses. So, so with that being said, we are confident, I'm confident, and hopefully you'll be able to be successful, get this property in the black in that we are number 38 of your clients, of your 40 that are running in the black. And the other two, hopefully they're pulling forward as well. But my main concern is Perump, the golfers here in Perump, the people that are visiting here, that live here, all of the residents of Nye County that will be able to utilize this property. So I do appreciate you coming here in person this year and giving this presentation.
Thank you very much. And I was sitting in on that. That was actually my first exposure was listening to Tom give the presentation last year. I was well aware of some of the feedback that he was getting. In the interest of full disclosure, I was like, oh my gosh, what am I getting myself into? But seriously, I hit the ground running when they gave me this site. I've been in this community and in this town a minimum of once a month since that presentation, sometimes twice, twice a month. And they know that they have my full support and the full support of the company and all the resources that we have at their disposal and that all they have to do is call me and we will be there. So really, what I've seen over the course of my short time here over the last year is a culture change. And that's been the most exciting thing. I heard what the commission was saying. I heard what the community was saying. I had stepped into the position of being responsible for kind of riding the ship. And I believe that I've hit the ground running. I believe that I am leading and making the right decisions to help support the property. And I personally am excited, as we are as a company, to see the, how that, how that work and that performance is beginning to shape the financial picture. So to your point, I appreciate the comments. We have had a much better year this year than previous year, but we understand that we are by no means at the finished ground yet. So we're going to work just as aggressively this next year and continue to add and hopefully have an even better presentation and better performance to present next year when we're up here.
Thank you. That's all I can ask and that's much appreciated. Thank you.
County manager, question. How many, how many years was their contract for?
I believe it was five.
What year are we on?
Fourth.
We're on the fourth one?
Yeah, I think the fourth.
My recollection, it's been, this property has consistently been in the hole. And I appreciate today's presentation. I think it's more of a presentation than we've had since my entire time in office representing, because this district, this golf course is right in the heart of my district. So what I find amazing is we're still in the hole, still costing money, yet we need more money for these projects, those projects. We have things that we have to fix. And I get, I get the flooding, but I'll close my eyes and go back to a time where the deck was completely beaten in liability. We had the concrete sidewalks that were all liability. And yet, I mean, it really, literally took me bringing it to everybody's attention over a year for it to be brought to anybody's real attention to get addressed. So I'm at a real, I'm at a real disadvantage. So maybe you guys can help fill some of those gaps for me.
Okay. Duly noted. Are you looking for comment on that? Feedback? I can tell you that built into the plan, which is never a popular thing to do, something that we've been discussing with the advisory committee to help shrink that revenue shortfall is we are proposing to increase fees at Lakeview this year. I don't think I need to explain to anyone the business climate that exists today and how inflation is impacting us. We cannot continue to absorb that entire brunt. So we've made that case to the golf, the golfing community. They know that. And we are probably going to be back shortly with a proposal to address those fees. So that will help offset that. But it's not complex, if you think about it, what we really do. It's really an equation of play versus price, price of golf versus expense is what we're trying to navigate to get to a cash flow neutral position at this property. And everyone has a role to play. We have a role to play as the management team as far as creating a product that people want, okay? And creating activity that people want to be a part of and custom, provide, meeting certain customer service standards, which we discuss and focus and train all the time. So that's what we can do is to help create an inviting atmosphere and have a robust calendar of golf activity that people can partake in and reach out to the non-golf community as well to help expand Lakeview's footprint. That's what we can do. There's a, the customer's going to have to understand that they might have to pay a little bit more for the product. They have a role to play as well. And then of course, the stakeholders and the commission, we have an obligation to play a part in funding some projects that will help support the continued growth and make Lakeview a more viable recreation option for the existing golfing public to help drive additional rounds of golf. So I think it's really a combination of all three of us, all three stakeholder groups. That's kind of what I alluded to when I said that's one of our core principles is getting people at the table. And if we're serious and if we want to make this thing work, we can do that at this property. The property is a great property. Again, for services, your seniors and juniors and beginners. It's layout is fun. It's affordable. It's the most affordable golf in the Nye County area. So there's a lot going for it. But to your point, you're right, we still have some work to do. And I think it takes, it will take in combined effort of all stakeholders to get to that point.
You're consistently six figures in the hole, year after year. Is this six figures, does that include your $60,000 management contract?
Yes, it does.
I think the numbers are speaking for themselves. That's six figures in the hole, plus we need more, plus we need greens, plus we need, plus, plus, plus. So when does that $60,000 really start working for us as a community? When does your expertise, when do you guys actually get to say, hey, look, you know what, because of some of our pricing, our contracts, we got these carts for next to nothing, you know what, we were able to make something happen. Or because of these contracts over here, we're able to get you this kind of quality discount, here's those savings. I don't see them here. I see minus 175.
Duly noted on that. I appreciate that comment. I was not prepared to answer that particular question, but I can give you that information because yes, Lakeview is the beneficiary of some of our purchasing power via golf course equipment, cart fleet and those types of things. So I can get that information to you after, at a later date, but certainly it's not, it's not outlined in that report. So you're correct.
But I guess for me, it's, we're in year four now. So consistently has not been either highlighted, outlined, shown up, communicated. That's great that you're talking to the advisory board that you just put together, but again, we're the, we're the people making those decisions. We're the guys that are, the purse strings saying, okay, here's the public's money. You know, you're very generously subsidized. You have the property, you manage it on our behalf. Plus you have money on top of the budget that's already there that you're generating off of the sales, the merchandise, the golf, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I mean, it's like, well, we're going to throw a phenomenal party over on the, you know, we're going to do a great block party, but you know, it's, everything's paid for because somebody else is paying for it. So I just expect to see a little bit more detail in here because the numbers just on the surface don't, they tell a different story. And I, and with respect, you said it's two stories. I appreciate everything you presented here. This was the most comprehensive report that we've received. I will give you that much credit. And I appreciate very much that you're here in person.
Thank you.
But my job is to ask those hard questions and eliminate that and say, hey, look, you get a management contract. I want to see a bang for the buck.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. County manager? This is a presentation, but it's also for action. What do we got to do here? Because I know there's some questions that have been presented to us in regards to capital expenditures and so on. Are we going to see some kind of another time, another agenda item that says we need to outlay some funds?
So this is Courseco's presentation of their annual plan in that they made some requests and some, outlined some plans. The possible action part is just for the, if the board wants to make any changes to those proposals and so yeah, that's your opportunity to do so now. And if you'd like something brought back at a future date, of course, we can do that.
Again, if they're asking for capital outlay, we need to probably agree to that somewhere. So I thought that had to come back to the board for it to be approved. What do you think we have to do that here? I hear her talking.
Cheers.
Well, right ahead.
Savannah, I can answer that question.
Thank you.
Savannah Rucker, for the record, yes, this is the annual plan required pursuant to the contract with Courseco. And what we'll do is we have a capital improvement plan that needs to come before the VOCC for all funds, including this fund that will include those capital requests as presented by Courseco today. So the capital improvement plan is still forthcoming and we're expecting that to be before the board in July.
Okay. That answers my question. I'm pretty sure that's what I was looking for, but I just wanted to get somebody to answer it. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Good, thank you.
Chair, I'd love to hear from some of the advisor, the advisory board members.
I'd like to hear from the public. I was going to ask for the public to give us some comment. Even though it's a presentation, we don't have to. So just make it brief, whatever you're going to do.
Come on down.
Come down.
My name is George Carey, C-A-R-E-Y. I moved to Perump six years ago and after a couple of years delay for a health issue, I began playing golf at Lakeview. I played there for the last four years, virtually every day. Recently, I, my wife and I play there at least four times a week. The reason we do that now is because conditions have improved dramatically over the past four years. Four years ago, it was like playing on asphalt. It has greatly improved now. In the last year particularly, under Tanner's assistance and the, and the creation of the advisory board, we have come up with volunteers that do work out there, like painting the out-of-bounds markers, painting the 100-yard markers and things like that at no cost to the county or to the town. We also recently, due to Tanner's efforts, had replaced all of the ball washers and all of the signs on each hole, which looked very nice and I have to commend him for that. But those were done by outside investors and it cost the town nothing. And they're really, really nice. It makes the course look like a more professional course than a backwoods hole in the wall. Conditions have greatly improved. Greens are in great shape. The fairways are coming back and in very good condition. Partly, it's a little slow right now because they mentioned the issues with the irrigation system. And that is causing some delays in improving it because the pumps, they can only get so much water at a time. They can't water the whole course. They have to go piece by piece. So that's kind of slowing things down. But I've been very impressed with the work over the last year. Personally, in my lifetime, I've golfed on 35 courses, last count, across the country. PGA, and I'm not a PGA golfer by any stretch of the imagination, but PGA level courses down to a number of small municipal courses. When I came down here, I moved from down to a number of small municipal courses. When I came down here, I moved from Orophino, Idaho, and they have two courses there, had two courses there. One was a private one and one was the municipal course. And, uh, Lakeview is easily the equivalent of either one of those right now. And it's, it's improving, I like to say daily, but it really is. Volunteers have done work out there. As I mentioned, several of us out there picking up pine cones and helping the group out and, and doing work that takes the, takes time from them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for your service.
Hi, Tim Bohannon, B O H A N N O N. I'm a modest golfer from that standpoint. My home course was the Mearfield Country Club, uh, next to the main club in Dublin, Ohio. My concern is economics. My concern is the budget. The other concern is looking at the SWOT analysis. I saw that you noted that the local population's only 37,000. What I didn't see is, hey, there's a lot of tourists that go through this area. And a stay and play mentality may not be so bad. And getting the word out for visitors to go through that, hey, that's an option too. I love the idea that you're bringing in junior golf. It's a wonderful thing. That's, that's, start them young. That's a good idea. But, making sure that we cover the other aspects too. We have a lot of tourists. And it says only 37,000 people, okay? And many of them are, are in an older age bracket, but they still play too. But also getting those who are coming through as tourism, picking up on that, stay and play would be good, not only for the course, but also for the town. But, I'm also in, in the looking and saying, hey, you've been in the negative for several years. What change, uh, the change should you make? How's, what's the payback period? What's in it for us? Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other public comment on the, on the phone?
If you're going to make public comment, we'd appreciate it if you had moved forward. Thank you.
Be on the phone. Hold on, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Lorraine Tout.
Sam?
Ma'am, one second. We got a person on the phone.
Oh, sorry.
You can stand there just one moment.
Go ahead, Sam.
Thank you, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, Herman Lewis, L E W I S. And to quote Dave Stevens, we've got the best commissioners anywhere. Thank you, commissioners, for all that you're doing, keeping an eye on this. From the very beginning, this golf course was a trade-off, I think, to provide to the community, to bail out the, the course and to provide to the community. We know that. And that's a tremendous benefit to keep it for, for, you know, the elderly, youth, other different leagues. And we knew that this was going to go negative. I don't think anyone had the illusion that this one's going to be a red pink elephant, whatever you want to call it. But, with that said, and it's a trade-off, I wish that there could be in the coming contracts, some kind of an incentive program and a sanction program with the people that are running it to say, look, you've got to make more out of this and help cover the costs of all these repairs that you know are going to need to be done or you're, you're going to be sanctioned or you're going to lose potentially the contract. I know there's a limited number of companies do it, but I can't leak, get that Hal Burton taste out of my mouth where it's like no bid contracts, everything falls on the county, and there's a lot of wonderful patronizing comments from the people that are running it. But, they basically have no skin in the game at this point, in my opinion. And I'm not saying the golf course is a bad idea and it shouldn't be there for the community. I just think that you commissioners could put together and figure out how much red ink there really is, what the real cost of it is, and try to offset that by motivating the managers of this course to do a little bit better job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, oh, yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Uh, Lorraine Tout, T O U T.
You can bend that thing down if you want to.
The microphone.
There you go.
Thank you. Anyway, yes, uh, last year when I was here with the annual meeting, I was not happy with the management of the Lakeview. I happened to work at Lakeview at that time. And I was not happy at all to what I saw going on. But, since Aaron has come into play with Courseco and Tanner being added to this group, the advisory committee, I've seen an unbelievable change in the course, uh, the attitude, uh, everything. One of the things I, I need to point out is that we do have people that come in wintertime. And when I worked there, they'd come over from the RV parks saying, wow, yeah, I'm so glad you're still open. We need to promote that more in the wintertime, that those people know we are there. I'm surprised the amount of people here in Perump that live here do not even know about Lakeview Golf Course. Talked to a gal, been here three years. Lakeview, never heard of it. Where is it? We need to get more out that we are located there. It is a big plus for the seniors. It's a smaller course. I love Mountain View, but quite honestly, I can't do 18 at Mountain View. I can do 18 at Lakeview. It's a great thing. The juniors, I am so happy to see the younger people and Tanner and the time that he's put in to promoting that. It wasn't really done. And I'm glad about that. So, it attracts, you know, we have public parks. We have dog parks. We have parks for kids. What's that costing this community? I'm sorry. You know, I don't go to any other park, but I do go to Lakeview and play golf. But, I think those parks are important for certain segments also. I think we can do more. I think it's going to be better. As far as the equipment, the pumps and this and that, they were old when you took it over. You know, there were things that needed repair when you took off, took over this golf course. It's been ignored by the community. And now, we are starting to say, as the advisory, we need to have this done, this done, this done. We need to, so for this to go forward and improve. And I see that that is actively being done by the new manage, you know, Aaron, Tanner, and this advisory group. I think it's a big plus for the community. Thank you.
What was your name one more time?
Lorraine Tout, T O U T.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to wait for one more person.
Danny Packard, P A C K A R D. Just like the car, they still make them in our house.
What?
I would echo that Lori had to say and what the gentleman on the telephone had to say. I personally have dealt with Courseco and a business opportunity in Oregon, and they're a very, very fine management company. They're a management company. And they do use their abilities to beat me down in golf cars. They beat equipment people down for equipment. But, once again, they're a management company. I don't know what your expectations were when you bought this course or what kind of, you know, uh, how you, how you studied it or how, what you thought you would get out of it. But, you've still got equipment from purchase of 19, or 2018. And that was probably three or four years old then. My plea to you right now would be is to give you some, give the course some kind of ability to get new equipment. Have Courseco use their ability to get new leases on golf cars, get new leases on, on, uh, maintenance equipment, which is, which is available. And the most important thing is water. I mean, what grows, what grows in a desert without water, other than the dirt? How many of you golf? Can I see a show of hands? So, how many of you golf? How many of you been to, yeah, I know Leo, I took you around the golf course that day. Uh, how, how many of you been out to Mountain Falls?
Course.
You played the golf course there? Have you played the golf course?
Orlando.
Go on, go on a road trip. Go on a road trip. Do yourself, you know, go visit day. Ask them to drive around and see what the difference is. There's so much potential at this little golf course that at some point in time, you may get to a plus side of it. But, right now, you're working from behind. Uh, I'd like to thank Leo though. A year ago, I said, Leo, you got to come over and look at this, this deck we've got. We're about ready to follow through. We're about ready to, you know, we can't even go out there and socialize after a game of golf. And I, thanks to Leo, there were things that are happening. We have a new deck. And we can actually walk up and down it without stumbling, and I stumble anyway. But, I, I plead to the, to the commission to not only look at this, this is a profit center. It can become a profit center. But, what you bought wasn't a profitable profit center. So, it takes time. I think at this point in time, you have a decent management group in here. I'm not going to say that they couldn't, they couldn't improve by using some of their power.
Danny, thank you. We're at three minutes. Thank you. You can blame it on Leo.
There's another year coming up.
Any other public comment?
I was going to say, do we have any more? I think we're done. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do have a follow-up comment.
Okay, go ahead. Do you, go ahead.
I don't want to mistake. Could you repeat your name one more time?
Aaron Hensley.
Okay, he's Hensley. I was going to say Bugbee, and I knew I was wrong. I, I knew I was wrong. I didn't want, I'm sorry. I did not want to go there. But, Mr. Packard is one of the reasons that a lot of these things have been brought to my attention, just specifics. And we, we went there and we saw them. So, you, you have to accept my apologies. I'm not being critical because I like or dislike. It's all irrelevant. Being critical because we're talking about the public's money. And there's an expectation versus what we're seeing out there. So, there's got to be that level of accountability. And I do, like I said, this is the most, this is the most in-depth presentation that we've had, at least from my perspective, which I'm very appreciative. Lori, right? Ms. Lori? I'll take her comments right there. I mean, she's going to make me a believer again between Danny and Lori. So, you got two really good people over there that, that are batting for you guys. But, I think this is really, in, in my opinion, I think it's in your hands to either do something with it, succeed, or to fail. So, we'll be, we'll be watching and we'll see what we can do. And I recognize that it is our property, the county, the town's property, the golf course. So, that's why they're coming to us, asking us for the repairs, the remediation and those items. So, I understand that. And, and we'll have to look at that some. But, I just wanted to share those comments. I just want to appreciate, I really appreciate everyone who spoke. Thank you.
I appreciate that. The good comments. Do you have a comment? Commissioner Cox?
Yes. Originally, when this was brought to us, I was against it. And I voted against it. And I think a couple of the other board members voted against it because it was a big white elephant.
It was a 3-2 vote.
And I really didn't like spending the taxpayers' dollars to be improving the backyards of the people that lived on the golf course. I felt that should be their responsibility because nobody's maintaining my backyard. And, but unfortunately, we didn't get our way with it. So, now we have it. And it sounds like it's kind of still a white elephant that might be turning a little gray. But, um, I, so it is what it is, and we have to make the best of it in order not to be throwing away the money we've put in it over the last four years. So, I have a couple of suggestions. And I don't want to dump any more money into it. I don't want to dump a lot of money into it, although, like I said, you have to spend money to make money. I like some of the things you've done. And, and especially with the recreation, with the kids and the golf and, and things coming in. Because there's nothing I hate more than for somebody to say, oh, we feel this is our private property, even though it belongs to the town because it's in our backyard. We don't want any kids here. We don't want certain people here. We don't want you to walk your dog here because we're a golf course. But, I kind of don't see that here. So, I think that's really good that you have a different attitude about it and that the people that live on the golf course actually have a more community-minded, um, thoughts about it. So, one thing I'd like to say is, is you could, I think it'd be very good if you could contact the tourism board and see if you could get them to help with advertisement. They do all the, they do all kinds of things. And they have money. They have room tax money and things that they could help with some of these projects. And I think you'd see a big increase in people if you go through them because they work with the hotels and, and other entities around here and all the events boards and things that are going on. So, that's one thought. And then, the other is to do some fundraisers. The golfers themselves could put together some fundraisers, donate things and, you know, have, be involved with the community in that way. And that would also give you free advertisement because you could go on Facebook and advertise. You could advertise your tourism. You could advertise through the news media, actually, the newspaper. So, I'd like to see you succeed, but I don't really want to do it at the, on the backs of the taxpayers anymore than what we already have because it is only like a chosen few that play golf. And then, if you, you could bring in more people, of course, with these new thoughts. And maybe get, get more of the community involved. And then, maybe they wouldn't be too objective to putting some money in somebody else's backyard. Or, it could become a big failure. And the only reason that I felt good about it is because I thought, well, if it becomes a big failure and it doesn't work, we could always probably get our money back if we sold it to condominiums. We sold the property for condominiums. And I really don't want to see that ever get, you know, to get to the point that we would have to do that. So, I would like, you know, I support what you're doing. And if it takes a little more money to, to move this along, and I know it was in terrible shape. That's why I wanted to vote against it. It was terrible shape. I knew that we were going to have to take on money, but, uh, so we did it in increments instead of coming up with it all at one time. So, I think there's still some money out there we could use. But, that's just my thought on it. I can support them. Hanging in there at least another year and we'll see what happens next.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. With that, I think we're done from our standpoint. We appreciate your, your report. It was really, very lengthy and very, very detailed. So, appreciate that. And we'll be seeing you some more. And I am going to ask for a comfort break.
Very proud of you, advisory board. I think, working with management, you've done a great job. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comfort break coming along. Five minutes?
Yep. Five minutes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Let's get us all back together.
Okay, we'll try.
I have, I have a quorum right this minute, so I'm going to start. I have to reopen item 15, please.
Item 15 for possible action, discussion and deliberation regarding public health priorities for Nye County.
I was told that I didn't ask for public comment. I'm going to ask for a public comment.
See none.
None on the phone, none in the audience? Thank you. I'm going to close that item.
We'll try to help you more.
Thank you. All right. I am going to jump to item number 42.
Item 42 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, rescind board action taken the approved agenda item 23 at the May 3, 2022 meeting wherein the board approved the open position court reporter as a public employee retirement system per's critical needs position per NRS 286.523, which allows district court to reemploy a retiree for a limited time while district court is searching for a replacement. And two, approve the open position court reporter as a public employee retirement system per's critical needs position per NRS 286.523, which allows Nye County to contract with the retiree for a limited time while district court is searching for a replacement.
Thank you. Does everybody understand what we're doing here? So, I mean, so once you, what?
Am I wrong? Is this the third time?
No, so, no, we're actually correcting everything to get everything back on track.
Why not?
So, we can actually say, we can actually put the item back out there to be, to be, so somebody can actually get hired. So, so, would you kind of correct it? So?
Yes. So, on May 23, the board approved to employ, reemploy a retiree. Well, the retiree doesn't want to be an employee. They have chosen to go the contract route. So, we needed to correct, we needed to rescind the employee approval and move forward with contracting with an individual to perform these services.
So, the motion would be is to rescind?
Motion to rescind.
Second. I think I, I think I helped you here, right?
I hope so.
So, and we don't have the DA here, so I want to make sure we're in good shape. Is that, do you think that's sufficient?
So, yes, for, for item one, we need to rescind to employ, reemploy a retiree. And then, item- And then item two will just be to, the board needs to approve the open position as a critical needs position.
Motion amended, so amended.
Two, four seconds. The amendment.
Right. So, and I, and I think that's, that's good because we, we're using you as the motion, by the way. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any public comment on this item? This is a critical need. We need to get some help in the courts. This is a very, anybody? Anybody on the phone? Well, I'm gonna close public comment. Thank you. So I'm gonna call for a question.
I was gonna ask Ms. Mulvey a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Mulvey, I just have a quick question, please. So the, the individual that was under consideration is still the same individual under the new consideration for his contracting?
Correct.
Very good. And you're good with that?
I'm, we're great with that. We just want to get her in here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
Aye.
Carbone's aye.
Thank you.
It looks five zero. Thank you for, I seen you sitting there. I said it was time for you to move on. Get you back to court. And item number 25.
Item 25, presentation of projected expenditures of money in the assessors' technology fund to be used in the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Come on down, Shirley. Come on, Sherry.
Please take your time coming down the ramp.
Thank you. Item 25.
You have any questions?
It's a presentation and projection of expenditures of money in the assessors' technologies fund to be used in the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
Yes, as you can see, we have our vendors listed. Our committed expenditures are $444,308.92. And then our proposed projects are our aerials, which is $700,000 over the next five years. Our field appraisal equipment, which includes GPS, new handheld technology where we can sketch outside and it automatically computes right to the computers, which saves time. Those are still in development process, so we don't know when we will get that. We've had them before, but because of our sunlight out here, it's very, very hard to see them on a screen. So we're waiting for the technology on that. Our computer equipment, which you can tell is, you know, through IT, which is new printers, new monitors, you know, keyboards, anything like that. And then our server, which is where we're doing our scanning now. And so there is a possibility, because we have such a large file system with appraisal and everything like that, that there could be a possibility that we could have to purchase a new server. So we have that monies in there, set aside for that.
Is this technology being used in the larger counties?
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Is this same technology being used in the larger counties?
Yes.
So we're just bringing ourselves up to the-
Up to speed.
Cool.
Up to speed. Yes, sir.
So, board, any questions? Any public comment? Phone? Thank you, Sam. I'm gonna close public comment and I'm gonna call for a question.
Well, just a-
You really don't need a question. It's just a presentation.
Thank you for your presentation.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Let's get back on track. Back to 17, right? Item 17.
Item 17 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, appoint two members to the PROMP OHV Park Advisory Committee due to two vacancies from the following list of applicants, Matthew Mattoon and Lois Seestrunk, or two, re-advertise for the appointment.
Motion to approve the two applicants?
Second.
Commissioner, I'd have to turn to the agenda item to find that. Do you have it in front of you?
What do you want?
The term.
Term is three years, term expire in July 2025.
Thank you. So amended.
So with that, I'm gonna ask for public comment on this item. On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you.
Do I need to amend my second?
Yes.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have an amended second and amended first. And now I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Aye. Two, four's aye.
Carbone's aye. Number 18.
Item 18 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve the purchase of fireworks for the Beatty 2022 Fourth of July celebration in the amount of $14,000 from Lantis, with $7,000 to be funded from Beatty Volunteer Fire Department and $7,000 to be funded by Town Tourism within Beattytown General Fund 24220.
Mr. Chair? Motion to approve as written?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Close public comment and I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
Carbone's aye. That's moving right along. Number 19. Consent agenda items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. By the way, that takes you all the way down to 24. Make sure. I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Phone?
No, Chair.
I'm sorry? Oh, boy, you're gonna have fun.
I can't wait to see you on the school board.
Oh, yeah.
Out there.
Yeah, we made a motion to approve consent agenda items.
Do I have a motion? Have a motion approved and close public comment. Call for the question.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
Two, four's aye. Number 26.
All right, keep up the pace.
Okay, number 33.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask the DA's office if I could take 33, 34 and 35 all at once by naming each individual contractor? Okay, thank you. For possible action, discussion and deliberation to one, approve, amend and approve or deny a modification to Section 5 payment for services for public defender services between Knight County and Jason Ernest, between Knight County and Nathan Elgent, PLLC, and between Knight County and Ronnie Boskovich, PLLC, by increasing the full compensation to $175,000. And two, execute the Second Amendment to the contract.
Chair, I'd like to approve the modification to Section 5 payment for services to the public defenders. And I'd like to execute the Second Amendment to the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Don't we have five public defenders?
We have five contracts. Two are currently, will be open July 1st, so we are advertising.
We're alternating.
We're gonna be seeing some more.
We're advertising for two.
Oh.
Two contracts.
Okay.
So those increases will come in their new contracts from July.
Okay, so I just wondered why there was only three.
These contracts, if you remember, we had made a thing to extend these contracts by year. So these ones, they accepted the extra additional year contract extension that we voted for. That's why we have to give them the pay increase here separately. The other ones will be done at that time in July.
Correct. Correct, correct. Check, check. Any other questions, Commissioners? Any public comment? Phone?
No, Chair.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
Aye.
Did I just close public comment? That's great. So that's five zero, Carbone's aye. Thirty-four. Oh, I'm sorry. Thirty-seven.
Item 37 for possible action, discussion and deliberation pursuant to NRS 244.3601 and 244.3602 to direct the clerk to set a public hearing not less than 30, no more than 40 days subsequent to the filing of a nuisance complaint at Zero Tonopah Avenue, Tonopah, Nevada, Assessors Parcel Number 00824604, owned by D.D. Gibson.
Commissioners, we, I guess so. Sam, do you have anything you want to talk about on this? You mean Sam Merlino? County Clerk?
Chair, this is Kelly Sedman for the record. Ms. Merlino is not present today. We usually don't have anything to add. We just accept the paperwork and present it to the board. The agenda item does specify the date of the hearing has to be July 19th, I believe, to comply with NRS.
That's correct. That is correct. So-
Chair, I'd like to direct the clerk to set a public hearing.
Thank you.
July 19th.
Motion to have a second to have any public comment? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Closing public comment. I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
Five zero, Frank Carbone, he says aye. District Attorney item. Oh, this is a good one.
Item 38 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to accept or reject Amendment Number 2 to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries Agreement to amend Section B, Paragraph 3 of the agreement to provide that unless otherwise directed by court order, the state of Nevada shall receive any recoveries described in the agreement, divide the recoveries in accordance with the agreement and all amendments thereto, calculate payments to the local governments, calculate attorney's fees for all local governments pursuant to the local government's applicable contingency fee agreements with their counselor in accordance with Amendment Number 1 where it applies, and remit payments to local government, governments and attorney's fees to the appropriate counsel on behalf of the local governments.
Oh, my gosh. Does that sound like a DA item or what?
Yeah, so, so a motion would be to accept the Amendment 2 for the One Nevada Agreement allocation for opioids.
Is Sir Richardson gonna speak on this item?
No, I, I'd like to make a motion to accept Amendment Number 2.
Commissioners, do you have anything much to add?
I thought that's why Brad showed up.
I think Brad showed up in case we didn't have any answers. Okay, so glad you're here. Any public comment on this item? Phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. So with that, public item, public hearing is closed. And I'm gonna call for a question.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
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 Two, four's aye. This is some of that money I think we need to use for the doctor. Number 39.
Item 39 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to issue a display fireworks event permit to the Beatty Volunteer Fire Department for an aerial display for their annual Fourth of July event on Monday, July 4th, 2022. This event is being held at Cottonwood Park in Beatty, Nevada, applicant Mike Harmon.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner.
Motion to approve as written, please.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Close public comment.
Chair. I had it last minute. Henry, do you want to take it?
Sure, why not?
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Okay. One more time. Is there some, is there somebody on the phone? Okay. All right, I'm gonna close public comment, call for the question.
Aye.
Two, four's aye.
Aye.
Carbone's aye, five zero. Item number 41, Public Administrator. I know she's not here.
Item 41.
I believe, Chair.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
She's on the phone.
Well, we've already voted, so. Oh, the Pub Administrator. Oh, okay, thank you.
Item 41, presentation regarding the quarterly report from the Public Administrator on deceased persons, cases that are open, closed, pending, NCPA creditor claims, non-cases or cases that have been turned over to the family.
This list is growing, for sure, unfortunately.
Yes. Am I on now?
You are on.
Okay. This is Ginger Stumney, Knight County Public Administrator. Does anybody have questions on the report? It's pretty much one of those, you can't really change this many people passed, this many cases are open, these are closed, these are ones we found family and turned over.
Ginger, I think you've done a phenomenal job and you continue to do so. Keep up the great work.
Thank, thank you.
What I like seeing, Ginger, is that a lot of these items are actually closing. I mean, we're actually catching up.
Taking some time.
We're actually catching up. That's good. Because it's good for the people, you know, the families and so, so on. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
So is there any, anybody in the public who wish to talk to this item? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Any questions from the Commissioners anymore? Let's move on. We're gonna go to item number 43.
Item 43 for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject Knight County Resolution Number 2022-23, a resolution to relinquish Knight County's revisionary interests in 1370 West Basin Avenue, PROMP Nevada, 89060, Assessors Parcel Number 03604120, more commonly known as PROMP Senior Center.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-23.
Second.
A motion and a second. So just so for the record, you could explain what the process is that we're gonna go through. You gotta push that little button that says push.
I think I would know that by now. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Mark Fiorentino, very briefly, I represent the Shepman Family Trust. There's some folks in the audience who are here to help answer questions if you have them, both from the Board of Trustees of the Senior Center and from Shepman Family. But just a very brief background, as I'm sure you know, the, the Shepman Family has contributed a substantial amount over the years to both the buildings and improvements at the Senior Center and in its operations. And as you probably all know, because I know that you, you visit the Senior Center in your multiple capacities, the, the Senior Center, the building itself is in need of improvements, fairly substantial improvements that include things like the sewer and septic system, the air conditioning units, the electrical systems all need to be upgraded. There's work that needs to be done in the parking lot. So the, as they have done in the past, the Shepman Family is ready, willing and able to step up and make those improvements. It's very important and necessary to them, though, that because they're gonna make improvements specifically to the land and to the building, that they, they own the land. So they have been working very closely with the Board of Trustees of the Senior Center on a transaction in which the Senior Center would dedicate or transfer the land to the Shepman Family Trust in exchange for two things. One, that the trust make these improvements. And the second, that the trust enter into a 99-year lease at a dollar a year for the Senior Center. So nothing will change. The Senior Center will continue to operate as it currently is, where it is. They will just operate on, under a lease agreement instead of owning the property.[1646.22] a lease agreement instead of owning the property. So, the action that you have before you today is a resolution, just to start the process. If you read the resolution carefully, it requires us to work with the District Attorney's Office to get the actual documents in the correct form. I'm confident we can do that. I think I've also mentioned to you that the trust is willing to, in that lease document, to give the county the right to assume and assign the lease if you want that right. So if, for some time in the future, if the center goes away, you would have maximum flexibility, frankly. You wouldn't be required to own the center and automatically take it over, do something with it, but, but you could step in and either operate it if you want, or assign it to someone else to operate, or do neither. So we think this is sort of a win-win, win for everybody to get the improvements made and to keep the Senior Center going.
Wouldn't it be another piece of that, the family that's taking over and is gonna be owning the property, if the people are currently there, leave, they can also lease it to, to another group of folks?
They could, yes. It just gives you one more step of flexibility. They could do that directly without you, that's correct.
As long as it's a senior center for the ninety-nine years, we really appreciate that.
I think we all would, that's the point.
That's where we're coming from. I just hope that's where the Commissioners are really coming from. We don't wanna turn it into a strip mall.
What?
No.
He's making sure.
Target?
Target?
I'm not sure you heard my answer, the answer is no.
All right. Any public comment on this question? You guys are okay? All right, good. All right, so with that, I'm gonna, on the phone?
No, Chair.
I'm gonna close public comment. I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
The board's aye.
The board is aye, five zero. And you were so worried.
Thank you again. I'm, I'm always worried.
Item forty-four.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item forty-four, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject Nye County Resolution Number 2022-24, a resolution accepting bid for sale of county-owned properties specifically identified as 1501 and 1503 East Calvada Boulevard, assessors parcel number zero-four-two-zero-four-one-three-five, located in section twenty-three and twenty-six, township twenty south, range fifty-three east, file map number one-seven-three-five-two-one P-dash-dot-one-B, three-point-eight-three acres, Calvada Valley, Unit Three, more commonly known as Prump Medical Center.
Chair.
Commissioner.
I need to make a disclosure.
So do I.
I was gonna ask you.
Okay. I'd like to make a disclosure that I'm a licensed real estate broker, but I have no pecuniary interest in this. Thank you.
This one, I was gonna hit you up, so.
Thank you.
All right, so.
I have one. Well, I'm gonna disclose an abundance of caution here. My wife did some volunteer work trying to help the group that's now purchasing this. I have no pecuniary interest in this, and contrary to popular news-reported belief, and that's, that's what I got, so, thank you.
With that, Commissioners, we have anything you wanna do here?
Chairman?
I thought we started something.
Sorry. Yeah, well, we kinda jumped the gun there, right? I'll make a motion to adopt Nye County Resolution 2022-24.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any public comment? Tonopah. On the phone?
No, Chair.
I'm gonna close public comment.
I just wanna confirm funds were received, all that good stuff.
Yes, all funds were received.
All funds, huh? How much?
Two-point-six million.
Damn. We did good.
We did good. County's really good.
Let's just hope we got everything right.
I just hope that the board continues to support in whatever they need, so we can get those medical services up and running. Now, that's the next step for us.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Wasn't just the sale, it's the next steps now. They need, they need, we need to help them get up, up and running.
What happens if they decide now that they don't wanna do the Medical Center and they wanna resell the property, to go to?
There's no conditions on the deed.
Yeah.
There's no conditions on the deed.
Yeah, so they can do that.
Well, seeing that we got more than the appraised value, I'm not sure who's gonna pay more than they paid, so I think that's a challenge there.
Well, the bottom's kinda falling out.
From my conversations with the, with the purchasing interest, they're moving forward with medical and have already been taking steps. As a matter of fact, I had to tell them, I said, like, make sure you square everything up before you start making other commi-- no, no, Leah, we're a hundred percent, so they're very excited about moving forward, and that's, that's something I'm happy about.
We'll keep an eye on it to make sure, because we, obviously, we need to help them if they need help, so.
Absolutely.
Whatever that help is.
Yes.
As long as it's not monetary.
I was just gonna say, as long as it's not financial.
So with that, I've closed public comment, and I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
The board's aye.
Aye.
Big deal for us. Item forty-five.
Item forty-five, for possible action, presentation, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend and adopt or reject Nye County Resolution Number 2022-25, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Nye County, Nevada, providing for the transfer of the county's 2022 private activity bond volume cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority and other matters related thereto.
So, now you finally made it up here.
I did. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners and staff. My name's Kevin Hickey, H-I-C-K-E-Y, and I'm the Business Development Specialist for the Home at Last Program at Nevada Rural Housing. I'm here today to provide an update on the Home at Last Homeownership Program impact within Nye County, and provide an overall use of the, source, use and limitations of the private activity bond cap, and why Nevada Rural Housing is requesting the transfer of your unused bond cap. In 2006, Nevada Rural Housing Authority launched the Home at Last Down Payment Assistance Program funded by private activity bond cap. Nye County has been supportive of the homeownership program from the beginning by transferring nearly sixteen-point-seven million of unused bond cap to Nevada Rural Housing Authority over the past sixteen years. Since 2006, the Home at Last Program has provided a total of four-hundred-and-six Nye County home buyers with sixty-six million in affordable mortgages, two-point-two million in down payment assistance, and five-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in estimated federal tax savings. This assistance helped three families in Amargosa Valley, one family in Beatty, three-hundred-and-eighty-two families in Prump, eight families in Round Mountain, and twelve families in Tonopah. In the past year and a half, the program has provided Nye County residents with seven-point-eight million dollars in mortgage assistance, consisting of thirty-one mortgage loans with down payment assistance and six mortgages with the MCC tax credit. Manufactured homes made up forty-nine percent of the properties financed. The average purchase price was just over two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, and the average household income was sixty-three thousand dollars. The average credit score for a Nye County borrower using the Home at Last Program was seven-hundred-and-fourteen. And two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty dollars in down payment was provided directly to Nye County home buyers just since January of 2021. Fifteen years after launching the Home at Last Program, has helped ten-thousand-four-hundred rural Nevadans achieve homeownership. Program-wide, that's a total of two-point-two billion in affordable mortgages, sixty-three million in down payment assistance, and thirty-six-point-seven million in estimated federal tax savings returned to home buyers through the Mortgage Tax Credit Program. Nevada Rural Housing is requesting a transfer of your unused bond cap for 2022 to help us continue operating the Home at Last Homeownership Program. The Home at Last Program has been using previous bond cap transfers to provide the Mortgage Credit Certificate Program, commonly referred to as the MCC. Aside from providing homeowners with tremendous tax savings year after year for the life of the loan, the tax credits returned to homeowners is money that is reinvested into your local community. The MCC helps home buyers qualify for a mortgage because the estimated tax savings is considered additional qualifying income. That additional income also helps to lower debt-to-income ratios, which is especially helpful for those carrying student loan debt. The MCC provides first-time home buyers or qualified veterans with a dollar-for-dollar federal tax credit equal to twenty percent of the mortgage interest paid every year for the life of the loan, as long as they continue to live in the home as their primary residence. For example, adding a mortgage credit certificate to a three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar mortgage with an interest rate of six-point-two-five percent would generate an estimated tax credit equal to four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety dollars in just the first year of homeownership. That equals an additional three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars in additional qualifying income that can help that family qualify for the loan in the first place. Nevada Rural Housing Authority serves Nevada's rural communities with a population under a hundred-and-fifty-thousand. This includes all of Nevada's fifteen rural counties, plus the rural areas of Clark and Washoe. To receive your continued support, we are asking for the transfer of your unused 2022 bond cap to the Nevada Rural Housing Authority. And I also wanted to make a quick comment earlier from the Section Eight information. I reached out to our folks in Rental Services, we currently have two-hundred-and-fifty active voucher participants here in Nye County. And if there are landlords interested in offering up their property, we'd love to hear from them. There is a section on our website specifically for rental assistance and for landlords, and that can be found at nvrule.org. And also, just as a reminder, that Nevada Rural Housing Authority is the legislative designated local housing authority for Nye County. And so that's why we are here, we offer that program in Nye as well.
And we appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's good information on the Section Eight. I was, I tried to look for the, for those numbers, because I knew it was way higher than a few, a few of them.
Yes, yeah. As it was mentioned earlier, not, you know, you don't necessarily know who's receiving that benefit, so it's, it's, it's good to know that, that there are folks in this community that are using that program.
With that, I appreciate your, your information, it's been very good, very informing.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second.
And I just wanna make a few quick comments. Thank you guys, tremendous instrument, and you, you definitely help a lot of people here in this community, and I'm, I'm happy to support this. I'd like to see more. We need to see more assistance for people here in this community, not just with Section Eight, but for homeownership. So whatever you guys can do to help bridge that gap, not just with the bond cap, please, please make yourselves as available as possible.
Absolutely. We appreciate that opportunity. Yep, thank you.
Appreciate that very much. Is there any public comment?
This guy, you know this guy?
I have no idea who he is.
Hi, Tim Bohannon, B-O-H-A-N-N-O-N. Having had some background with this, with a close friend over in California with HUD, this is definitely a very positive thing for our community. What I think we'd like to see a little bit more information on, maybe a presentation might be good, is on the Section Eight component. That might be a good presentation item for a future commission meeting. But very much in favor. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a good, that's a good idea. If, if at some point in time we could get a presentation on Section Eight, that'd be great. Then it might inform some of the people that were uninformed.
Can you also, before you leave, leave your contact card with, with our staff?
Yep.
We'll make sure that gets around.
Absolutely, we'll do.
I think we're overcomplicating the Section Eight just real briefly. It's real simple. It's, you know, if you have a needy family, they apply for it, it's about a two-year backlog waitlist, then you have to have the other side where you have a rental, and I want to, or that person, the landlord, wants to rent that out to Section Eight, and then they figure it out between the two.
Problem is, we don't have the properties to rent.
Right, right. Biggest challenge.
Yeah, lots of, you can have all the vouchers you want.
Right. And we do have a local resource right here for that, in Sharon Hughes. She works for Nevada Rural Housing, and she's our, our Section Eight or HCV property inspector.
It's also listing, because some folks that wanna get on Section Eight, okay, sometimes don't know when they're publishing the list to get on Section Eight. And then it appears that there's always a repeat, repeat, repeat. I don't know what that, how that process got like that, but, I mean, it'd be nice to just break down the Section Eight stuff to show maybe people can really understand how they get it, you know, what the process is, the timing, and so on and so forth.
Yep, absolutely. And a great resource in the, in the short term is our website at nvrule.org. It breaks down that process for prospective HCV clients as well as landlords.
Most people don't have, the ones that are looking at Section Eight don't even have a TV versus a computer, so.
Yep.
So that's, that's some of the concerns, they still have flip phones. So, that could be an issue. So it's nice to have an audience, and it's on our, on our website, I mean, it's on our system, so eventually they can actually get to see it.
Through the chair.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hickey, does this also include Section Eight disability?
There is a provision for that as well. There is a separate application, or, I'm not sure if it's a separate application, but there's a separate section on the website that explains the additional steps or resources available for those that, that do have disabilities.
If, if you were to come back with another presentation, it would be valuable information for those here living in Nye County that may be on Section Eight disability as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make note of that, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Did you have a public comment, ma'am?
Eight oh five.
Thank you very much.
That's the over-under?
No more public comment, I'm gonna close public comment. Anybody on the phone before I do that?
No, Chair.
Close public comment. Commissioners?
Aye.
Aye.
The board's aye.
Aye.
The board is aye. Item forty-six.
Item forty-six, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to consider participating as a cooperating agency to the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, during the environmental analysis for the proposed construction and operation of an approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-mile-long buried fiber optic line spanning from Reno to Las Vegas.
I know Nick was here just a little while ago. Oh, there he is. Did you wanna talk to this at all, Nick?
Oh, he moved. He was on the other side of the room, that's fine.
Okay, we got Director Wickman as well. So you guys can do a duet.
This is Nick Pay, P-A-Y, Field Manager for the Bureau of Land Management's Prump Field Office. This is actually being, this project was being managed out of our state office, but I can speak logically about any of the questions you may have.
Well, I think it's pretty much explanatory, unless you had something to add to it at all.
No, it's, it's mainly, especially here, coming through Nye County, it's pretty much following the, the highway right of way. It'll just be a parallel.
That's a tremendous amount of fiber. Four-hundred-and-fifty miles, that's significant.
Fiber project.
What an investment.
I guess my, my only comment would be, what kind of casing are we using?
It, it would be the standard.
So, any kind of a nuclear explosion or EMP would be bye-bye. Okay, just, we know that. All right.
Frank, excuse me, Mr. Chair, it was just an investment. It's, we're not going above and beyond, let's, we just need to say thank you at this point. What, Mr. Pay, just briefly, what does that entail, being a, you know, cooperating agency? Will we actually have a seat at the table?
Yes.
And our commentary is going to be accessed and discussed and?
Yeah, it also gives you the ability to review the environmental documents during the cooperating agency review, which is done prior to public review. If you, if you're not a, on as a cooperating agency, then that review period comes later. It just gives you a little extra time as cooperators to review those documents.
I appreciate that. So, Commissioner, Director Wickman? Would you like to?
Yes, sir.
Add to this?
No, I think Mr. Pay covered it very well.
Good job.
Do you have questions of me?
Are you gonna be participating?
I'm the one that submitted the agenda item, and I expect to bring it back to you with an MOU, so that you can review what is needed to participate in this activity of the county and of them.
Yeah, we, we just wanted to make sure we heard it come from your lips. We appreciate that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Hang on a second, we got somebody wants to make public comment.
John Bostick, B-O-S-T-A. How does this involve the town of Amargosa, because the highway goes through our community? And my question is, is since they're putting in this fiber line, would the town be able to access this line and use it, or what? Because to this point, other than just seeing this request and seeing the, the backup of where, where it goes, that's the extent of the information that's been brought to our community. And nobody has come to our community and made a presentation, and it also goes through other unincorporated towns that you have authority over, and then when it gets up to Tonopah, it goes through the Tonopah area right along the highway, and I, I guess the question is, is Mr. Commissioner Jabar, has, has Tonopah been involved in anything on this? I'm just asking a question, because there's been no, no information has been provided to the community.
I believe that's the reason why Lurinda is gonna be sitting there, asking the questions about being a cooperative agent, so I believe that she's gonna be making those comments, like, what, what is this all about?
Okay, well, I, you know, I'm just sitting here.
None of us know anymore than what you write here, and that's the reason why
Okay.
the director is gonna be directly involved.
Well, could this gentleman answer the question, would the community be able to connect into this system and be able to use it? Because we rely upon stuff up in the air, through the air, and if it's windy, it's, it's displaced, you have to redo all of the satellite adjustment to do it, where fiber optics is direct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a suggestion based on Mr. Bostick's interest in this item. He too can fill out one of these letters for the town of Amargosa and become a cooperating agency if they would prefer. But Mr. Pay and myself have nothing to do with how this is operated, other than monitoring and watching and providing expertise on what's happening on the public lands. We're not the company that's proposing this.
I won't be three minutes. Tim Bohannon, B-O-H-A-N-N-O-N. Something else that would be beneficial is, if the public has ideas of opportunities that we can leverage. So if those are, as they, as they come up and come across through further discussion, that would be good to get, get into our hands and get into our knowledge of things that we can do with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, I have a quick question, please. I can't, I can't seem to find it in the, in the backup, but do you know if this proposed project is going to replace what's already in existence from Vegas to Reno?
No. And right at this point, we have been offered the opportunity to apply for and ask for a cooperating agency status. and ask for a cooperating agency status in order to be involved and at the table. This initial letter is just a request to be involved. So, once they receive that letter, then we should receive an MOU back that tells us what our responsibility will be, and it'll be up to you whether or not you want to sign that letter. But until that point, we will, we don't know anything about the project other than four hundred and fifty miles of fiber optic.
Thank you.
Nick, go ahead.
Yeah, I can answer that a lot. It's a brand-new fiber optic line. So, it, it ties into Enterprise down in southern Las Vegas and goes all the way up to Reno. And it is, it won't be replacing anything. It'll be in addition to whatever.
In addition to. Thank you.
Yeah, there's absolutely nothing in here that tells you anymore about it, so.
Yep.
Yeah, one step at a time.
So, guys?
Aye.
Aye.
Where's aye?
Aye.
Close public comment. Thank you.
Yeah, you did.
Five zero. That's okay. I'm multitasking. Anybody on the phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Erica Gerling, G-E-R-L-I-N-G. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, so more information is good. Um, generally, comment periods are thirty days or ninety days for the public. So you would get that information before the public and would be able to comment on. Uh, so I think that's a good thing, as long as in the MOU, there isn't a, uh, non-disclosure that you have to sign or something like that. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, what's, before the public comment was closed, I mean, let somebody else in. Item number forty-seven.
Item forty-seven, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve an unbudgeted administrative technical coordinator position within the Natural Resources Office.
Director, go ahead. It's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I have been employed now for you as the Natural Resources Director for fourteen months. We have had some very heavy lifts in that period of time for one individual to do. I have used Mary Ellen Giampoli extensively over the last year, and many, many times it's on a daily basis. I would have had this on the budget to go through the regular budget cycle. However, we did not receive the notice of Mary Ellen's retirement until just recently, and she will be retiring at the end of this month. During the course of trying to figure out how this was going to be handled, what I was going to be able to handle in the future, uh, the job requirements that are on my job description, I put this before you because I'd like to have this administrative individual on staff. Um, it is qualified, it, it is, um, listed as a technical coordinator because I would like to be able to ask the applicants about their experience with NEPA. I think it might be advantageous at this time to bring this in-house. We have, I know that in the last fourteen months, we have spent, um, seventy, seventy-nine thousand dollars on Mary Ellen Giampoli's contract simply for land issues, resolution, uh, land issues. The, what I am proposing here with all of the benefits comes in less than that. Not only that, but with the help of Mary Ellen and with my, um, I was instrumental in, I call it bulldogging the individuals who, uh, owe Nye County money. We were able to retrieve, um, the cost recovery funds from VEA, which they delivered a check to Janey a few weeks ago. And through my bulldogging as well, I was able to get the state BLM director to authorize and pursue a refund of cost recovery that they've had for several years that was put in their hands to pursue the focus plan amendment. And with those two efforts in the last fourteen months, I was instrumental in bringing back to the general fund a hundred and sixteen thousand. So currently, this office hasn't cost you anything except for Mary Ellen's contract. Um, I'm gonna miss Mary Ellen. I rely on her quite a bit, and quite frankly, I'm a little bit nervous about going forward in the future without her. But if I could get somebody on staff to train, it'll also allow me to retire before I turn seventy-five, which would be very nice.
What do you got? Thirty years for that.
Oh, you're so sweet, Chairman.
So, um, knowing that, uh, that Mary Ellen is a variable, very valuable tool, unfortunately, she's retiring. That's a, that's a shame. But she also has a lot of budget that's gonna be available. So...
Yes.
My honest opinion, I think this is a good, a good, a good thing to make happen. So, um, Commissioners, I'm looking for what you guys want to do.
I'm of the same opinion. Um, what, what I want to make sure the public can realize is that our challenges with public lands is not going to be lessened over the course moving forward. Um, you've all been getting the list for solar. It's insane.
Yes, it is.
And, um, our Director Wickman has been chasing the lands bill that's going to make a significant difference in Nye County as a whole. Anything from cemeteries to landfills to our fairgrounds, and that work needs to move, keep moving forward. The big thing that you need to realize is that we get three-point-two million dollars from PILTS, which is our public lands. So, I think that's kind of like funding this particular position, so I'm also in support of this.
So with that, Commissioners, um, Commissioner, go ahead.
Actually, I would like to speak, but Commissioner...
Please speak. Please, after you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, just a couple of questions, please.
Yes, sir.
When, when you started fourteen months ago, uh, you started as part-time, and I know that, uh, you've been all over the place, and I know that you presented, uh, some of the work that you've been doing. It was just a scratch, scratch of the surface of what you've been doing. Uh, so is that still the case, that you're working part-time?
No. I'm sorry to say. I attempted to. I tried to. Um, I had to bother our county manager on a regular basis, two or three times a week, to tell him, here's what I'm faced with. What do you want me to do? Do you want me to just stop work and go home? Or do you want the job done? And based on how serious those issues were and what was at stake for Nye County, um, he was approving every week what I was working until it just, it got beyond a full-time job. And I had overtime on there for a while. So it has morphed into a full-time job plus. Therefore, another reason for this request.
Okay. And, and I understand you, you prefaced with, uh, you wanted to get this on the, uh, the budget meetings. And, and as you know, everybody knows that was here and listening in, watching, we're, we're very, very tight, very tight financially. And, uh, so my question, I don't know if Savannah's on the phone. Do we have the money to do this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Savannah Rucker for the record. Uh, so essentially, what we will be doing to fund this position is we're gonna utilize the funding sources that had paid the MEG contract previously. And so the overall impact to the county is a net-zero impact because of the cost of the MEG contract year over year.
And that contract has been in place since nineteen ninety-eight.
Thank, thank you, Savannah.
Thank you.
And thank you, Director.
Commissioner Blendo?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the position.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Public comment on the phone?
No, Chair.
Chair, I'd like to ask a question.
Go to it.
Is there any chance that this needs to go out to bid, since it's a new position? Are we okay, uh, by not putting it out to bid?
Well, it, it'll be a represented position, so it will go out to advertise.
Or...
We're, we're, what we're doing is approving the position, not the person.
So that's what I'm saying. Will it go out to bid after, you know?
Get off a publication for people to...
Are we just hiring this person, or are we gonna put it out to bid?
We're, right now...
Not bid, but out to advertise it for the position. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm on the contractor end where I live, basically. Um, okay, so it will go out, and there'll be other people be able to come forward and apply?
Yes, this position is an NCEA-represented position, so it has to post for at least ten days.
Okay. That's one of my questions, and I thought I had one more. Um, okay, I'll leave it at that because I've lost track of what my other question was. Now I've waited so long. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. I had public comment. Closing the public comment. Nobody's on the phone. I'll call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Where's aye?
Everybody's aye. Five zero. Have fun, Commissioner, Director.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck finding someone.
That's, that's gotta be the...
Thank you.
Very big question. Yes. Thank you. Item forty-eight. Oh, guess who's gonna be on the phone next?
For possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Resolution Number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-six, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds into the Tonopah landfill closure and post, post-closure trust fund.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Savannah Rucker for the record. Uh, this request, as well as the next agenda item, are both for the same purpose. The county maintains a closure and post-closure trust fund pursuant to statute associated with the landfills that the county operates. This particular agenda item is related to the Tonopah landfill. So what this resolution does is it, um, it's a result of an audit performed by a third-party contractor that identifies we need to have a certain level of funding within this trust fund account, and we fell short. So this request is to authorize that the Treasury's Office makes that transfer into that post-closure fund for the Tonopah landfill to ensure we are maintaining proper funding levels.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Close public comment. I'm gonna call for the question.
Aye.
Where's aye?
Where's aye? Five zero.
Aye.
Item number forty-nine.
Item forty-nine, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject Nye County Resolution Number twenty-two-two-dash-twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing transfer of funds into the Round Mountain landfill closure and post-closure trust fund.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any, any public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
No, Chair.
Close public comment. Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Where's aye?
Where's aye? Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
Five zero. Item fifty.
Item fifty, for possible action, discussion and deliberation regarding a request to set a date, time, and location for a public hearing to adopt, amend, and adopt or reject a resolution authorizing temporary inter-fund loan for fiscal year twenty-two-two, twenty-three.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to set the time for July fifth, twenty-two-two, and the time ten a.m.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment? On the phone?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Close public comment. Commissioners, call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Where's aye?
Everybody's aye. Item zero, fifty-one.
Item fifty-one, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to fund digital forensic services and consulting with Privacy Technician, Inc., from the Nye County General Contingency Fund, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment? On?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Close public comment. Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody's aye as well. Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, for possible action, discussion deliberation and possible action to staff, two, one, send a letter to the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, in support of their application for the OP Highway Vehicle, OHV, grant provided through the Nevada Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And two, provide the BLM access to the Nye County gravel pit for use in developing one mile of dedicated gravel road to the Big Dune picnic area located in Nye County.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner?
Motion to approve as written.
Second.
I have a motion, and to have a second. Any public comment? Do we have a problem, Director? Giving up your dirt?
Um, a little background-wise walking down here, we did a couple meetings real fast coming up with a solution with, uh, the BLM, Bureau of Land Management, and the OHV Commission had someone at the table, along with, uh, our Public Works Director, uh, representing the OHV community. I sat in, and moving quickly, we've gotten on to this letter, which needs to get to the OHV Commission to make a decision on who's getting money. And, uh, all of your public lands advisory board meeting and your OHV committee support this. They just will have letters coming later, and we're happy to have this letter in front of you, board members, now. Thank you.
Looks good.
And to answer your question, Chair, it's his dirt. We just have a permit to use it, so. We'll be giving him back his own dirt.
It's okay. I just wanted to make sure we get that clear.
And, and, Mr. Chair, just for the record, I did, I did hear from the Chair of the Amargosa Town Board, uh, who is in support of this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move on too far, can I make a public statement, just to thank your staff? Um, your staff, both in the Planning Department and Public Works, have done a tremendous job in helping us do this. Um, we made a run at appropriated funding, which we failed at, obviously. Um, but we appreciate being able to work with staff and being able to find an, an alternative route to this. And even though OHV Commission is very supportive, so we appreciate your guys' help.
Specifically also, who wasn't mentioned was Stephanie, Stephanie Elliott.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good, good progress. And again, I already knew it was a BLM's pit, so.
The Peoples', what?
Oh, the Peoples'.
Ah.
The Peoples'.
There we go. So, with that, any public, do we have a motion for this?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, and we got, we got a second, too.
Yeah, motion.
Any public comment?
Yes, Chair.
All right. I love it.
Caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Hi, Robert Adams, ADAMS. Uh, the project is very much needed. Uh, please forward it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close public comment. Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Where's aye?
Everybody's aye. Five zero. Got my cash. We're almost on the last part of the page here.
We're on a roll.
Whoa, fifty-three.
Item fifty-three, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to approve a tentative map for Beckham Heights subdivision, creating two-hundred-and-forty-six, two-four-six residential lots on property zone-specific plan SP. Each residential lot containing an average of five-thousand-six-hundred-thirty-nine acre feet. Maximum lot size is seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty square feet, and minimum lot size is five-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety square feet. Assessors, parcel number zero-four-five-dash-one-two-one-dash-zero-eight, and zero-four-five-dash-one-two-one-zero-nine. Mans Road Properties LLC, owner Eric Hopkins, Kim Lee Horn, agent, applicant.
Director or Assistant Director?
Disclosure, I'm a real estate broker, uh, but have no pecuniary interest in this. Thank you.
Anybody else? We're good? Okay.
Steve Osborne, OSBRNE. I just wanted to state that, uh, this property is part of the Adaven Management Development Agreement, which was adopted by the Board in two thousand and five. Um, it doesn't expire until twenty-twenty-nine. Um, the development agreement does allow for five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty single-family dwelling units. So these two-hundred-and-forty-six homes, um, on this tentative map would be part, are part of that five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty homes. So...
Yep. A lot of tiny homes.
Assistant Director, do they have the water allocation for this?
Yes. Yes, they do.
Well, may I?
There was a fight over those water rights, not too, back many years ago. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. So, Assistant Director, um, on page two of the, of the backup, the top, number two on the top of the right-hand side of the page, recommendations... recommendations, number one, and this is under the RPC. It reads, "The water supply and sewage disposal is proposed to be provided by the lots, or to the lots by Prump Valley Utilities." And so I appreciate the Commissioner asking that question, so does proposed mean that it's already been settled, that they have the water rights, they have everything taken care of in place for this development? It's from back in 2005.
So they are proposing to connect to Prump Utility Company water system. When they come back with the final map, before they get to the final map, all that's gonna have to be verified by DWR in-depth, they will have to sign off on the final map. But it's my understanding, they, they do have the water rights, but that, that goes to DWR for verification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commissioner comments?
I'll ask the applicant when he's ready.
Thank you, thank you, Assistant Director. Your name is?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mark Fiorentino, representing Richmond American, who's the proposed developer of these homes. Happy to answer any, any questions that you have.
I just want to take the water question a step further. Is this on three-to-one dedication?
You know, I want to be precisely accurate. So it is on the dedication that's required by the service rules of the Prump Utility. So I believe the answer to that is yes. Yep. So, and to answer your question, Commissioner, as far as I understand it, the water rights have already been dedicated, or are committed to be dedicated, as soon as we hook into the system. So the water rights all exist, and Mr. Osborne explained it correctly, that may technically all come together when the final map is approved by DWR, because they have to sign off on all that.
Thank you for that clarification, sir.
Any other questions? That I'm gonna ask for public comment.
Hi, Timbo Henan, BOHA, N-N-O-N. I know that an agreement is in place, until, what I'm hearing, 2029. But it seems like the square footage per lot is extremely, extremely low. From everything I've heard from the Commissioners, of what to watch for, what to avoid building, and making sure that the sizes of the lot is large enough, even to the point that we've been talking for quite a while of two and a half acres as mem size, that would be more of a former Commissioner Coney comment for me. But, you know, it seems very small, point one-two, from a lot size. So very, very tiny. Is that the direction we want to go? Thank you.
Not the direction we want to go, it's the direction we got other Commissioners locked us into, unfortunately, by signing that agreement. Believe me, we are not really happy that we have to go with small lots, but we're locked in. Say that with sawdust in my mouth, believe me. But again, we're stuck with the requirement. I'm surprised John Vasta's not up here to talk about that Adavon water rights, but I guess we're, we're okay. So, oh, I...
Stirred up the pot now.
There's a reason.
John Vasta, come on down, you're the next contestant.
John Vasta, BOSTA. To answer your question, my understanding was, is that the time the Adavon project terminated, half of the land went to BLM, and the water rights went to eventually Mountain Falls. It went all the way to the Supreme Court. And in the Supreme Court, they took and said that water rights underneath the status of PER was real property and could be bought and sold. That is property that has never been certified to beneficial use. I believe probably nine months ago that the state engineer forfeited the water rights that went to Mountain Falls. So the water rights that were involved in the Mountain Falls over close to 11,000-plus has been forfeited. So now you take and say, is there ample water rights in this agreement that was agreed to in 2005? And they're saying, oh, we'll hook on to the utility company. The question is, were the water rights dedicated to the Prump Utility? And when the Prump Utility converted their agricultural rights to quasi-municipal, they had to take a 30% haircut. So the question is, is nobody has really come up and stated what those water rights are. And everybody's saying, oh, that will be when the state engineer signs the final agreement. And it just seems to me that everybody's kicking the can down the road. And that's the reason why I haven't got up and protested all of this, because of all of the things that have happened to the water rights. And the way I understand it is that there was a water tower built above Highway 60, and that ran down through the part of the Adavon project that was vacated. And when they built the Mormon church, they couldn't use the Prump Utility because it would plug up the lines. So I have no idea what the water and sewer on the abandoned land was. And so the question is, is I sat in these meetings and heard you talk about 1,000 acres, and as far as I understood, half of those acres were abandoned, and was given to BLM, and they had a big lawsuit because there was no water.
So what we'll find, what we'll find out, John, is when they put everything together, we'll have answers for everything you just said.
That's correct. And so that's the reason why I haven't got up and said anything, because I didn't went to Mancha Belondo to think that I was negative just because I lived in Amago Valley. Thank you.
No, never, never.
Just, I just want to make sure we ever, we get all these questions answered, and I know that this will answer a lot of the questions that have been out there for years. So, and I'm glad, Mr. Fiorentino, that you're involved with that.
And I appreciate that, Commissioner. There are serious concerns that deserve answers. I don't have anywhere near the history you and Mr. Vasta do on the years passed and the forfeiture of those rights and the lawsuit. This issue, though, is relatively clear and straightforward, so that this, we cannot record and proceed with the final map without the state engineer ensuring that we have dedicated existing unexpired water rights.
And that'll answer a bunch of questions. There's more to come for the rest of it.
Yes, sir, there will be.
And I'm happy to eventually, we'll be done with it and be moving on.
Could I get the Assistant Director one more time, please? Could you just briefly explain the difference between this subdivision compared to Mr. Murphy, Ken Murphy's subdivision?
He didn't have a development agreement.
Well...
Under what development agreement are these guys operating under? The Mountain Falls, is that correct?
This one that's on the agenda today is the Adavon Development Agreement.
Okay, so we haven't heard about it because it's just something completely separate and different. We've been seeing the Mountain Falls, we saw Mr. Murphy's, we've seen other ones, but this one?
Right, this one was approved in 2005.
Yeah, must have been dusty on a shelf somewhere, huh?
So it's one of, you know, 15 development agreements that the county has.
Okay.
A lot of them are rolled, so.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I keep getting told that even though things have changed drastically over the years, that these people are entitled to have us approve whatever there was years ago because they had a development agreement. Then I've had other people tell me, no, all that's expired, that it's like starting over again, and we do have a right to change things.
The specific one does not expire until 2029.
Okay, so that actually should be put into, I believe that should be put into the, inform the public, it should be put right into the item when, when it is put about. Because people still scream at me, you know, we shouldn't be doing anything less than an acre, and I said, well, I'll accept a half acre. Well, even at that, we shouldn't be doing that because, you know, all these things were back whenever, and now we have all this water problem, and we shouldn't be forced to do something that may cause us to have to all move out someday because somebody else, because all these people moved in. I don't know, if maybe we could get a DA's opinion on that and see if we are actually bound to have to suffer through these old agreements. Not necessarily this one, because he says it's not expired, but I know we've had some that have expired.
Any of the ones that are expired, we have the ability to make change.
Yes, we have the ability to change them, right?
If they're expired, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, because that's what I've been told on the ones that are expired. And if he knew the question, then you guys don't have to do the answer. He's already clarified that. So that people that told me that were not wrong. It was just the difference of expired versus not expired, because, you know, we, at one time, people didn't think anything of this water thing, but even though the fact that they're on a utility company doesn't make a difference, because that utility company is still pumping that water out of our aquifer. That, you know, there's only so much, whether it comes out of somebody's personal well, or it comes out of the aquifer, it's still all coming. And that, the water is really starting to concern me, because we're seeing this happening all over the United States, if not all over the world. And if that water's like gold, if we run out of water, we're done. I just hate to cram a whole lot of people into one area and suffer the consequences of what it's going to bring. And we've, I know we've forced other people to build half acre or less, and I don't, I mean, I, we could ask them to make changes on their own.
They didn't have the...
That, even though, I know they have the agreement, but I think we had, didn't we ask Mountain Falls to make changes and they agreed to it? Couple of years ago?
Not that I know of.
I don't know, I don't think Mark was involved in that.
Not that I know of.
But, yeah, because Deborah, you remember that Deborah?
The only person we had...
When we did Mountain Falls and we asked them if they'd come back.
The only person we had the ability to make change was, was the gentleman we were just talking about.
Mr. Murphy.
Mr. Murphy.
No, no, I remember him.
We did, we did, we did ask them to, they had some multifamily stuff that they were putting throughout the subdivision, we asked them to spread it out a little more when they did. That was negotiated at that time, but we didn't change the size of lots.
So let me give just a touch of context, I guess, I should have mentioned this to begin with. So the Supreme Court has just made a ruling upholding a groundwater management plan that could significantly affect water management, and I'm, I'll make sure this gets to everybody. So my concern is, is we're approving things, and then the senior water right, which I would believe that Mr. Fiorentino's client would state that they had, would supersede everyone else's water out here, and ergo, the groundwater management plan situation that we currently have, because that basin up in Eureka is actually under critical management, it's the only one in the state. So we, there's a little bit more of a situation here, and I, I just, you know, I'm not, typically I would support these right out the gate, I just, there's, there's, this is a piece of information that I received today that I think is very critical, that could have a detrimental impact to everyone else around, so.
It's always been senior rights is over, overrides everybody's, I don't know what the, what did the Supreme Court do that's different?
From what I was reading in here, it's almost like they can supersede and then they'll just curtail everybody else.
They can.
Well, that's a, that's a curtailment, which is a, something that came legislatively that we are not, you have to go from needing to do that, we're not, we haven't reached that point, and then when we reach that point, we've got 10 years that we're looked at consecutively, whether we do a good job. What I want to point out to you is that we have a recharge of 20,000 acre feet, and last year's pumping inventory, no, the year before's pumping inventory, we were using 16,000 acre feet. And we get credited for putting back into the system by reinjection through treating water. That, there's a recovery, we get a lot of, we got a lot of work to do.
The cloud seeding, right?
We got, we're doing lots of stuff, so progressive.
We're getting further and further away from what the item is here, I know that
You know my birthday's around.
What is an issue, I know what is an issue, but we're, we're starting to get a little bit further away.
What, October?
But it's also part of the, helping us make our decisions. I mean, water, water...
Mr. Fiorentino, just real quick, how many units, how many lots?
There are 246, I believe.
Yes.
And they're all one-eighth of an acre?
They range in size from about
7,000.
5,400 square feet to 73, 7400 square feet. So I guess I would just submit to you, look, we understand it, we, we, nobody is trying to get around or not recognize that water issues are significant here. I, I saw the blast, too, that there's a recent Supreme Court decision. Again, I would submit to you, they're actually slightly different issues. What's before you tonight is, can we record a tentative map that fully conforms to a existing unexpired development agreement? So the lot sizes are, a ship almost has sailed, right? They, they have the rights under the development agreement to do that. Whether we have the water rights to do that or not is, I'm telling you today that we do, that we've dedicated them, that they're, or will dedicate them as soon as we hook up, and that they are enforceable property rights and water rights. But you don't have to get bogged down in that today, because that will be affirmed, it has to be affirmed before we can record a tentative map, which is the actual approval we need to build houses. So before we can build any houses, we, it will have to be affirmed that the water rights that we have, notwithstanding current law, and notwithstanding what they may have changed, they have to be in place before we can record a tentative map.
I'd like to ask you a question on that. Each property that is out here supposedly comes with two water rights. And then, so does size matter in this case? Because if you're gonna have 10 houses on one acre, or eight houses on one acre, does that mean each house is entitled to a, or each individual is entitled to?
That's a very good question, and I think as we go forward with your, your other challenges, as we try to figure out the proposed projects that aren't subject to a development agreement and so forth, that we can give you a chart, and I'll help you work on the chart, because that's a very good question. It's actually when you're, you're on these smaller lots and you have to dedicate water to the utility, so you're not on a domestic well. You, the limitation on the amount of water you can use per house is severely less than you could on a domestic well. These lots use per house much less water, and they're required to because of the service rules of the, the utility, and it's enforceable, because they're metered, they can't exceed a certain amount. I can show you a chart that if your interest is to say, let's get the, and I'm not saying this is your interest, okay? But if your interest is, let's get the biggest bang for our buck for the water that we have. A much more efficient use of water is the smaller lots, because they are required to use, required to use less water than the bigger lots that have to develop west, domestic wells.
Off the subject completely. But basically, that, the utility uses 300 gallons per day per household. Using the 245 lots, they'd use 41 acre feet of water annually.
So all they would need is 41 acres of water, all they have to give up is 41 acres of water, but they still have a ton of people on it.
Besides their, besides their green zone that they're doing.
So...
So they're not using that much.
So now...
The usage is...
Now that we've gotten so deep into this, can, can we get back to the item on the agenda?
So one other question here is, how many, is this the only park that we're looking at?
This is the only part of the Mountains Ed's South slash Adavon Development Agreement that you're looking at, yes.
And what was the total for the agreement, the Adavon?
Oh, Mr. Osborne had that at the top of it.
Approximately 5,000.
5,000, didn't you say something? In the, this whole development agreement? Yeah, right. This is just a, obviously, a small portion.
This tentative map, there's only one park? Is that correct?
It's one part of what was contemplated in that whole development.
One park? Outdoor, green, grass?
Yes, yes, I believe there's, I believe there's one, that's correct.
And perhaps with, in, in respect to this tentative map, are there any other improvements? Fire, police, any, any of those safety items, anything that could just be mentioned?
Well, of course, when they actually develop the house, they will have to pay your required impact fees for all of those things, for fire, police, so they're required to pay the same impact fees as everybody else.
And you have equal comp, you, you, your group has contribute, your client has contributions as well, outlined in the development agreement?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm not 100% certain, but I am 99% certain that the development agreement would require them to pay... would require them to pay your standard impact fee per lot. In addition to that, and now I understand your question better, Commissioner. Because the development agreement is larger, so they're going to be paying per lot, but they're also going to be proportionately paying to the other requirements that were set forth in that development agreement, whatever they may be. I suspect they had to do parks and other public improvements. So they'll be also contributing their proportionate share to that, those requirements.
Mr. Dunford's been very good to the community and we, there's that expectation, so I don't want to leave it hanging.
I, I apologize, I didn't understand your question the first time you asked.
So Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve a tentative map.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second. Do I have any public comment? Nope.
We did?
Any public comment on the phone?
No chair.
No, you're done. Thank you, John. All right.
We have no choice but to approve this?
I'm going to close public comment. Any more questions from the, from the board? Seems we exhausted ourselves. I'm going to call for the question.
Aye.
Nay.
Where's I?
Everybody's aye.
Aye.
Four one. Okay, thank you.
I'm just getting tired of being yelled at by the public. God.
You need to educate them, is what you need to do.
I'm trying. They don't believe you.
I know that. Item number 54.
Item 54, for possible action, discussion and deliberation 2-1, discuss the bid proposals received for bid number 2022-05 Black Paving and Overlay Project to award bid number 2022-05 Black Paving and Overlay Project to Las Vegas, paving in the amount of $489,604 or Wolfenstein Construction Company Inc. in the amount of $521,030.15. 3, approve, amend and approve or reject the contract with the selected bidder. 4, fund from 10-205 Roads. 5, reject bid and provide direction to staff on how to proceed with the project.
Chair, I'll make a motion to award bid 2022-05 Black Paving to Las Vegas Paving in the amount of 489,604 and to execute this contract and move forward.
Mr. Boras seconds.
I have a motion, a second. Director, is this the most reliable contractor?
Is this the most reliable bidder, responsible and responsive bidder? Yes.
Just want to make sure we hear that.
Is there a possibility that Wolfenstein's are offering us something that Las Vegas Pavement isn't? Because Las Vegas Pavement is going to have to pay for transportation at the price of gas and people coming in and out and, so I'm just wondering if maybe they missed something on here that we're going to end up having to do change orders on because, oh gee, there's things that need to be done that didn't get put in there and then we find out Wolfenstein's, we'd have been better off with Wolfenstein's with no change orders.
The way that we're working this nowadays is that, the, what they bid, they know the project, they see the project, this is where it's at, this is what you're doing. However you need to get here, whatever you need to do to be able to, to perform the work and get the work done, the only time there is a change order is if we change something and we're not changing anything.
So you're happy with it the way it is and we're not going to be coming, hearing back from you going, uh-oh, they forgot to do something, we need an extra several hundred thousand dollars. I see it happen all over Clark County all the time, this company.
And that's because there's a lot of underground stuff. Clark County, when they bid out their Public Works projects, it's a whole bid package, underground, everything, all to the same contractor. That contractor isn't responsible for subbing it out from there. There's no underground work being done here. We're doing all of the grading work, all they're doing is paving, that's it, so.
So would that be the same case with Wolfenstein's? You'd still be doing all of that and Wolfenstein's?
Wolfenstein is just paving. Same thing, like we just got done doing a farm road on Amerigoza. We did all the grading, we did all, all the prep work, everything, we did, we went out and inspected our guys' work, just like if they were a contractor and there was a couple of things wrong and they had to fix them and...
Who did the paving, who did the paving on that one?
Wolfenstein did, yes.
So they could afford to do that, but they can't.
It's a part of their contract.
God, I hate to give it to outsiders too because Las Vegas Paving is, you know, they're so busy as it is, we may end up on the back burner.
I don't believe he's, he's having any problems. He's got some of the major contracts with this, so.
Yeah, he, he, he is, they are definitely doing a lot of work for us right now. They have Front Valley Boulevard South that they're actually performing right now, so.
This is, this is actually...
Talking about Wolfenstein.
Yes, I'm talking about Wolfenstein.
This is actually an oddity because normally, Wolfenstein bids better than everybody.
I know.
Right.
That's why I'm surprised at this because I'm hoping that there's not something else going on here.
It could be because he's...
You have to remember, I grew up in Clark County. I watched many things with Las Vegas Paving and people complaining.
And it could be that he's got so much on his plate, Commissioner.
And I, and I, you know. So anyway, okay.
So with that, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the board, public comment? On the phone?
No chair.
You going to make one up? Thank you, Sam. Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Where's I?
Everybody's aye.
Thank you, Public Works, for doing that work in advance and saving that money for county.
Item 55.
That we couldn't afford these jobs otherwise.
Item 55, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to accept a grant of easement agreement per Exhibits A and B with D.R. Horton, Inc. for the purpose of allowing the grantee to install non-standard improvements, including landscaping and irrigation until a future date when Nye County deems the non-standard improvements need to be removed along the east line of North Black Road for Assessor's Parcel Number 035-671-06 through 035-671-11, 035-681-01 through 035-681-05 and along the north line of West Adkison Street for Assessor's Parcel Numbers 035-681-06 through 035-681-16.
Chair, motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Phone?
No chair.
You have anything you want to offer? Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call for the question. I close public comment and call for the question.
Aye.
Mr. Boras aye.
Everybody's aye. 56.
Item 56, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to accept an offer of dedication for road right-of-way being a 6,980 square foot utility and right-of-way dedication for South Eberhard Road, a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 047-041-08 as described on Exhibit A and depicted on Exhibit B from Atavon Management, Inc. and designate South Eberhard Road as a minor county road, rejecting maintenance for the purpose of future road improvements, fronting the property located at 6,200 South Nevada Highway 160, Promp, Nevada, Assessor's Parcel Number 047-041-08.
Motion to accept.
Yeah, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I just want to elaborate on the motion to designate South Eberhard Road as a minor county road, rejecting the maintenance. Yeah. If you'll accept that?
Absolutely.
And I'll amend.
Thank you.
John Bosta, B-O-S-T-A, I heard the word Atavon. And one of the questions I'd like to ask is in the Las Vegas area, when a subdivider comes in and wants to put in the subdivision, they have to also build the road. Why is it here in our county we accept only easements and then we don't have them develop and build the road? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, would you like to answer that question?
I'd like to entertain a question, answer.
It has been past practice to make them develop roads that are immediately around their subdivision, Burson Ranch, for example, is they develop the road all the way around Burson Ranch. And then they also have to do contributions to any roadway or intersection improvements that need to happen. Depends on, a lot of the problem we run into is that we don't own some of the properties where they need to do those improvements and until we get that right away, we can't really make them go and build it.
We may get one side, but not the other.
Right, right, so.
Just as an example.
If we're able to have them, you know, develop it around their, their subdivision, then we can do that. But if we don't own anything else outside of that, then we can't really have them develop other people's properties, so.
It's, it's pretty tough. And a lot of people don't want to give up their property, so.
That's right.
Right.
All righty then, what's, call for public comment? I think I did. Anything on the phone?
No chair.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment.
Can I have anything to add? Good.
Maybe we can think about a question, I don't know. I'm going to call for the question.
Aye.
Mr. Boras aye.
Aye.
57?
Item 57, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to accept an offer of dedication for road right-of-way being a 36,870 square foot utility and right-of-way dedication for South Eberhard Road, a portion of Assessor's Parcel Number 047-031-19 and Assessor's Parcel Number 047-031-05 as described on Exhibit A and depicted on Exhibit B for Mance Crossing, LLC and designate South Eberhard Road as a minor county road, rejecting maintenance for the purpose of future road improvements, fronting the property located at 6,050 South Nevada Highway 160, Promp, Nevada, Assessor's Parcel Number 047-031-19 and 5810 South Eberhard Road, Promp, Nevada, Assessor's Parcel Number 047-031-05.
Chair, motion to accept and to designate South Eberhard Road as a minor county road, rejecting maintenance.
Thank you.
Boras seconds.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Any public comment on the phone?
No chair.
Close public comment. Commissioners, call for the question.
Aye.
Mr. Boras aye.
Aye.
All right. I can move us into something really, really good. General public comment, up to three minutes time period per, limited per person, actions will not be taken on matters considered during this period of time until specifically included on the agenda as an action item.
Lightning round.
John Bosta, it comes to mind that we are accepting these developments with small lots. And if you take a look at the Review Journal this last week, there was a fire in Las Vegas that burnt, I believe, 10 units plus a yard where there were all the cars. And here's an example of when you have a fire, where they have all of these houses close together and they have a fire, it's going to be totally different than if it was one resident on one acre versus eight houses on one acre. And the thing is, is that what I don't believe is being considered by these developers is the possibility of fire and the destruction that fire could cause, and I think it would destroy more property. And having these developments with small lots, close buildings, seems to me that we are overlooking the possibility, what happens if there's a fire. And I have made comments driving into Las Vegas, looking at all of those houses where there's a five-foot easement on each side of the lot, those houses are 10 feet apart.
Yep.
And 10 of them burned up. And they're not even sure what caused the fire. But what was amazing to me is all of the automobiles and the parking, in, in the taxi cab, all of the cars were burned up. Did the cars cause the fire or did the fire cause the, the damage in the, in the cars?
I don't know that answer.
And nobody knows that answer. But the thing is, is that I think allowing this construction of buildings so close together on small lots is, is eventually going to be detrimental to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? General public comment? On the phone?
No chair.
I'm going to close general public comment and I'm going to move on to Commissioner Management comments. This is limited to announcements or topics or issues proposed on a future workshop or agendas.
Chair, I'd like to make a request of Assistant Dr. Osborne. Then, back in when there was a whole bunch of development agreements, we had a really nice map, legal sized map of the entire basin of Promp. And it showed, you know, little indicators of this like a subject and then it had the name of the development, how many, how many homes it was projected to have. And I'd like to ask you to produce one of those, please, and also have a termination date for those development agreements on that, so we can have a visual to having these backups. Thank, thank you.
There's more to that too, but, because we need to sit down and really go through those agreements again and see where's some deficiencies. 2005, there was a whole different thought process in this county in regards to water because they were going to go get water from other places, so. So it's a big difference. And that may be some of the things we might have to look at from a legal standpoint. So if we would, I'd like to sit down with the DA's office and talk about that at one point in time because things changed since 2005. Any other comments?
You could go to Critical Water Management and then see what it gets you.
I want to hear that.
And the Division of Water Resources to say no more development, so.
You know, I, I, I have one comment actually, and we'll see if this turns into an item. Recently in the election, there was an email sent by manager to all the candidates regarding the situation out at the, at the election, at the town of, on the town property. I have to presume it was at least 155, because I sent at least 155 emails back, presumably more candidates that received this email. But what really shocks me is that I, I was the only one that read that and said, hold on a second, you can't do that. And he went outside of the scope bound of his authority that this board gives him. So I'm really concerned. That doesn't sit well with me. What, it, it's a two-fold thing. You know what really doesn't sit well with me is that nobody else saw that and was like, oh, wait a minute, you can't do that. I mean, we're not talking about just us here locally, I'm talking about US Senate candidates, governor candidates. That's the power of government, ladies and gentlemen, and I think people really need to wake up and smell a fresh cup of coffee. People, the government, we, it's like the priest, that wear the white robes is an inherent, built-in level of trust. And when your constitutional rights get usurped, I think, I think we are, we're all taking it for granted that the government is just right there at face value. And we all do make mistakes, even in government. So it, it's just a pause for concern that nobody caught that and I seem to be the only one that was like, hold on a second, you can't do that. You may like or dislike the result of it, which is irrelevant, it's about usurping your constitutional rights. So I'm considering some kind of item to, to bring, like we said, some changes need to be made on that.
Yeah, and we've got a lot of...
We just went through it, so.
Right, when it's fresh on our minds, we want to do the best job we can. And when you called me in concern of it...
The three in the morning thing is ridiculous.
Yeah, when you called me and said this is out, you know, this is inappropriate, I said, you're not wrong, and you took further action as you should. And frankly, I read a lot of stuff and I don't see things like everyone else would, you know? So, yeah, sure, it's time for change within, we talked about it, we're going to do it. And so, let's do a better job so it's easier for the candidates next time. Thank you.
Well, I did respond to that. I was probably the first responder because I did not agree with the way it was written. Not so much that he did it, because it was, I, I don't agree with the thing totally. I think we need to throw the whole thing out. This is ridiculous.
Agreed.
It's a control factor. We, we used to, I'll go over there and we had a big party, we had a good time, everybody got along. We, it was first come, first served, whoever got there first set their booth up. I mean, I don't care if they show up at 3:00 in the morning, that's their loss of sleep, not mine, but, um...
Do we have something we're doing, guys? Are we putting something on an agenda or are we...
We just have to stay, we just have, we just have to stay back that 100 feet. That's the only requirement by law we have to do. It doesn't say you have to sit here and you have to sit there and here, and you have to sign this and you have to sign that and you have something else. No, this, that's our property. Go over there and set it up. If you have a fistfight, then somebody either wins, loses, or they call the cops. So it's, I'm a simple person.
We are Nye County, the wild, wild west.
I'm a simple person. I am so tired of paper and paperwork, but...
Commissioners, Commissioners, I apologize, we're a little tech. Since we're moving from items to be brought up on a future agenda to three possible commissioners that have voiced their...
I'm having an issue.
...opinion, we may be going into some action and off-this-agenda items, so I would caution you to refrain from voicing your opinion that you may have to vote on.
Oh my gosh, she realized she didn't say anything until the very last item? Oh, my gosh, she realized she didn't say anything until the very last item?
Yeah, but she's right.
How about that?
Yeah, no, I agree.
We got all the way through.
Trying to get you guys corralled.
All the way through.
Well.
You like to go bless.
Well, yeah, but where else do you talk about it if you don't talk about it under comments?
Because if you want that changed, it's a change you're gonna need to make on the agenda.
That's right.
So, you can have those abilities, but right now, the way the agenda item's written, you cannot do that.
I think we just.
Again, caution.
I have a simple answer.
Caution, caution.
Mr. Chair.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move to.
So, do you wanna put something on?
All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Because Deputy DA, Marla Slowtek, reminded us that she's here, I would like to say three things.
Uh-oh.
Protect your children, conserve your water, and spay and neuter your pets.
Thank you.
My pests?
Are you giving, are you giving, wait a minute, are you giving a directive to put something on the agenda, or no? Okay.
We're gonna bring it back.
Okay.
Director?
I'll be quick, I'll be quick. Uh, just to let everybody know that the N dot one sixty improvements have been pushed back to July eleventh.
Correct.
Okay.
So, everybody can be happy.
Yep. All right.
So, with that, thank you, thank you, Director, and I am going to adjourn.